Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Welcome to the Town and Pittsboro Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, March 25, 2019. Our meetings are generally open with a moment's time. Jay Farrell, would you leave some place?
Sir, everyone rise from the plate. Do I believe in the Constitution of the United States of America and that your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. Do you have your agendas before us? Is there any additional modifications to these agendas or ready agendas? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda? So then? Moved by Beth Wilson Foley, seconded by Michael Fiocco, as in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on. As to the consent agenda, there are two items on there, the minutes from March the 11th and our financial report as of February 28th this year. Is there approval of the consent agenda? So moved. Second? Moved by Pamela Baller, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on. There are a few more, the first item, which is the public hearing. And if someone, our witness is sworn, is it two, three, one?
Yeah, please, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have rezoning, REZ 2019-02. Third Wave Housing is proposing to rezone parcel 80091 from C2 Highway Commercial to ONI CC Office and Institutional Conditional Zoning Districts. Pittsboro does not currently have any properties in a conditional zoning district, so this is going to be a little bit different than the general rezonings that have come over the board before. Conditional zoning districts are intended to allow for the development of property in accordance with the general use zoning district standards and additional conditions that enable the use and development to fit better within the neighboring properties. This parcel located at 196 Chatham Business Drive totals approximately 3.4 acres and has been zoned C2 since the late 1980s. The future land use plan has this property designated for commercial. The surrounding properties are Zone C2 to the north, south, and east, while the west side of this property adjoins property Zone M2 and C2. Staff finds this property to be an suitable location for the proposed Office and Institutional Conditional Zoning District because although the surrounding zoning is mostly highway commercial, the majority of the uses along Chatham Business Drive are of fairly low intensity and would also be permitted in the general ONI zoning district. This amendment is not consistent with the future land use plan. However, due to the specificity of the proposal and its compatibility with the majority of its surrounding uses, staff is recommending approval. The site plan you have before you is for multifamily housing. The developer's intent is that this be affordable housing. They have proposed 48 units total, nine one-bedroom, one-bathroom units, and 39 two-bed, two-bath. One of the conditions they have imposed on the site plan is a maximum of 71 parking spaces, which is also the minimum required by the zoning ordinance. They have also imposed a maximum of 65% impervious. This is recently changed, 70% is what is shown on the plans you have before you. We have also had a question posed to us regarding buffers. There has also been a change in what is currently on the plans you have before you, which show a 100-foot buffer down in the southern corner of the property. There has been changing in interpretations going on as to what type of buffer has been used, and it's been determined that a 50-foot buffer would be required along the entire side, not a 100-foot at the bottom corner. There will also be a 50-foot buffer required around the pond on the property to the south of this one. This project will require 10,440 gallons per day. The current allocation available under the 90% rule is approximately 23,600 gallons per day. Staff is recommending approval of the sewer allocation with an expiration of six months unless the site plan and construction drawings are submitted to continue the process. This is so that our remaining sewer capacity does not get tied up for a long period of time. However, the applicant is requesting a 12-month expiration date. Staff recommends that following the public hearing, the rezoning request be sent to the board for its recommendation.
Thank you, Victoria. We have signed up for a public hearing tonight, Jim Nau.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Jim Nau, 60 Perfect Court, Pittsboro, North Carolina. I'm speaking on this public hearing as chairman of the interim Affordable Housing Board. The Third Wave Housing people came to our board meeting and gave us an idea of the kind of project that they were proposing for Pittsboro, and Richard was able to give us a good deal of information about affordable housing within North Carolina generally, which has been very helpful to us. Third Wave has a considerable amount of experience in affordable housing. They have built over 760 units in North Carolina in eight towns and one town in South Carolina. The Affordable Housing interim board supports Third Wave in this proposal. We believe that building these units will meet a critical need for Pittsboro and begin the process of additional affordable housing in Pittsboro. So we would encourage the Board of Commissioners to work with Third Wave to do those things that are necessary to see to it that we get these units built and these units available to people that need to live there. So we thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Jim. The next person signed up is Richard. Help me with your last name, Richard.
All right, Jim. I'll bring up your questions and notes.
Generally, at a public hearing, we don't have the time for questions. That would be appropriate. You can replace.
Please, the applicant, and you appear to answer. Okay.
Yeah. So you said that he would, I thought you were asking if we got any questions. This would not be a time. And so I assume the thing likewise is for Mr. Warren and Mr. Howell?
Correct.
Are there questions or is there a motion? And this motion would be comprehensive not only of the approval of the conditional use district, but also of the sewer allocation? And if, excuse me, I'm sorry, this would pass on to the planning board at their first meeting?
Yes, at their meeting.
Okay. And at that point, will they be determining not only the site plan but also the sewer?
No. Just the town board does that.
And this would object conditional use of the conditional zone.
Yeah.
Slightly different. And I would like to just explore, you may have a question or two. Victoria, you mentioned that they are committing or making conditional 71 parking spaces. Are they also making conditional the number of loading units and bedrooms associated with those units?
I would think that would be a condition since it's shown on the site plan. Staff would treat that as a condition since it's shown on the site plan, and their parking is based on that. If they can't, they can't do more than the number of units shown.
I think our traditional zoning regulations state that any condition cannot be regurgitation of the ordinance. I think you said 71 parking spaces are required.
That's a minimum, not a maximum.
So they're placing a maximum.
Correct.
I think it's great. Well, what I see also in here, not written, because I think it states that the things in bold are the conditions, but I also see on the plans increases to the side yards, which I perceive that as a condition. Additional 15-foot setback off of the stream upper. I would like to acknowledge that this project states that it's affordable. I think that should be a condition to be affordable housing. Given that it has this plan associated with, is this restricting this property to this one use?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Could I have clarification of the buffer? I'm hearing hundreds of buffers.
Sorry. It's going to be 50 foot along the stream, the stream and the pond. No 100-foot.
But it's shown as 100-foot on the drawing as an error or earlier?
Staff has come to a different interpretation of the ordinance. So staff previously asked them to include the 100-foot, but from further discussion, it'll be changed to 50-foot.
Or we'll take up that space?
Whenever it's there.
If you don't want to look at the site, in a very small corner.
Yes, just a small.
We'll be taking up the setback.
So no, Mike, because there won't be any development over there.
No, it's just.
It's just the technical.
It's just a small portion right there. Instead of that line being here, it would come out there.
So where's the pond?
Um, right here.
Existing pond, there would be a new drainage, thousand stormwater essence. I think you said while it's not shown here, that pond will have a 50-foot buffer on it as well.
Correct.
So existing pond, so something to be mindful of. Who generated the trip generation? Can you do a peek out generation as well? Can you please?
Any other questions? Public hearing then, is that closed and we'll refer to the planning board next one?
I think it's closed, the public hearing. Some of the planning board, their review.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, fresh period. Next matter on our agenda is citizens' matters, public expression period. There are seven folks signed up. Seven folks signed up, and we will continue with our usual rules, which are that we will limit speakers to three minutes apiece, and the first person signed up is Suzanne Davis.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Suzanne Davis. My husband Jeff and I are residents in Potterstone Village. We are opposed to the building of new concrete plant in direct proximity to our neighborhood. We are native North Carolinians who returned to Pittsboro to retire in 2016. When we purchased our home in Potterstone, we were aware of the old chicken plant and concrete factory located south of Monture Road. However, we believe that these were relics of the past in Chatham County. I recently reviewed the entire comprehensive plan entitled Plan Chatham: Working Together to Preserve and Progress, which was adopted by this commission in November of 2017. My purpose this evening is to call your attention to this mission statement that you adopted to guide all your decisions about the future of Chatham County. The number-one planning goal was identified as preserving rural character. The plan says that in Chatham County, rural character is manifested in a backdrop of forests and fields dotted with natural features such as creeks and hills and structures such as farms and craft studios, nowhere are factory mentioned. The document recognizes the need to guard against emerging environmental issues and asserts a proactive approach is needed. The vision set forth early in the plan is supported by specific goals and strategy. In addition to the rural character standard, several guideposts address the cement factory issues. Number five says to conserve natural resources, including water and groundwater, the night skies and the tree canopy. Number six says to provide recreational opportunities and access to open space. Number eight, especially pay attention to this, to become more resilient by mitigating, responding, and adapting to emerging threats. A key element listed for this particular goal is to become and remain a carbon-negative community. Cement manufacturing is currently responsible for 7% of global carbon dioxide emissions. Number 10 is to foster a healthy community. Your 2017 document is a paradigm of healthy development that aims to ensure that commissioners, present and future, protect citizens by recruiting sustainable, clean industries and getting guidance to the developers in order to preserve resources in a healthy community and to support future planning. Clearly, the addition of cement trucks and more construction traffic through downtown Pittsboro does not support another stated goal of growing tourism in our area. Finally, consider the health plan and all policies approached set forth on page 77. You should read it again. How does a cement batch plant next to our homes protect the overall health of our neighborhood residents? We charge you to act now to preserve our community. Do not disregard your own vision statement by allowing a new cement plant to be built next to Potterstone Village. Thank you. I have citations if you need hard copies with those on there.
Thank you, perhaps. The clerk would appreciate having you. Thank you very much.
Suzanne, I think you were citing a document called Plan Chatham.
Yes.
I think that is Chatham County's master plan or comprehensive plan.
Uh huh.
And that is not Pittsboro's.
And you are not amenable to any of those?
Oh, I think it's got great ideas in it.
Why is it on the Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh website?
Other than it's helpful for us to enter link, but I would have thought it would have been clearly demarked as a Chatham County document, not a Pittsboro document, because this board definitely did not vote on it or approve it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ron Hatley.
I'm Ron Hatley, the board of Royal Hatley Road. Madam Mayor and members of the board, I've come before you this evening to give you a thank you for the interest that you have expended in terms of developments, and I'm sure the massive amount of time and energy that you put in that is massive. I also would like to thank the members of staff for, I'm sure, it's been tireless efforts and innumerable hours in looking at the elements. I also would like to thank the members, the investors of Mosaic and Chatham Park as they expressed their concerns becoming members of our community. I also would like to thank any of the stakeholders that we may have in this development process. What may sometimes appear as confrontational, I'd like to assure you is concern and a great passion for this place where we call home. We have history here. I have history here. Where Mosaic will be developed at one time was a relative's dairy farm. That dairy farm was decimated either by mad cow disease or COVID-19 disease. I'm not sure the CDC or the agricultural department ever determined what was the cause of that, but the decimation left polluted cows along an entire pasture area. Of course, there was ruination for that family farm. The financial ruin. Ultimately, the home place became a Halloween, a place to go for Halloween, is a haunted house. As a much-older man, I floated the Hall River. Many times I had to carry the boat over the rocks as much as actually floating. I also remember on Saturdays and Sundays, whenever helicopters came from Fort Bragg during the floods to try to rescue people from kayaks and that were cleaning for their lives and trees. If you now go to Hernan Road off of Robert Chapel, you will see that the decimation that's occurred to the land there, there's nothing green, not a leaf, not a blade of grass. If you drive toward Apex, you'll see the same type thing. Apartments have cropped up almost overnight, and again, with nothing green anywhere to be seen. What we see now in these areas are things that cause us concern. We had recommendations that were made in 2008. We had agreements that were made in 2010, 2012, 2015, and now we reached 2019. I want to thank all the stakeholders for their due diligence, for their respect, for their neighbors, and for the interest of others. And I ask the board, would you have any less concerns, citizens' rate, than we have with us today? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Next speaker is Lynn Kiyoko.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. First, I am just delivering the next batch of petition signatures. There's 135 there, and that brings the total to 1,584. For those in the audience that don't know about the petition, we're asking the Town of Pittsboro Board of Commissioners to require Chatham Park to preserve all the existing trees, to develop, that the tree coverage requirements right now of from 0 to 20% will not make Chatham Park an exemplary development, and also asking for greater protections for the Hall River and Jordan Lake. And I have handed you a copy of the letter that I wrote you by email last week, and just wanted to go over a few of the points. I'm not going to read it all, but I feel like this question of tree coverage and how much will actually turn into tree canopy at Chatham Park has become kind of a strange issue here of terminology. And 50% is based on the idea that trees that we don't know about, that might be in people's yards or other places that we're not counting, will someday create that large of a coverage. But I would like to see Chatham Park just increase their percentages for tree coverage right now. So if you look at this paper, I just came up with some suggestions really based on taking like what Chatham Park has and then looking at what the recommendations for the Tree Protection Ordinance for Pittsboro from 2015 had. And I'm offering this as kind of a starting place. These aren't hard numbers, as you can see, so instead of 0 to 3% in all the most dense areas in those village centers, I'm suggesting 10 to 20, other non-residential 20 to 30, thinking of that 30% as business parks that typically have more landscaping and trees around them, high-density residential 30 to 40%, and low-density residential 40 to 60%. And I'm thinking that, you know, this could be a way to have more preserved forest, natural areas, especially closest to all of the most significant natural areas that are in Chatham Park right now, including the state, the lower Hall River State Natural Area, the Robeson Creek areas, the ravines, the, you know, the hills, the bluffs above Robeson Creek there. There's a lot of places that were in that southwest shore conservation assessment that could be looked at for preserving these existing trees. And then, secondly, just very quickly, because I gave you all this information, but this idea of affordable housing versus more trees, that this is very much a topic being discussed nationally right now, that people in low-wealth areas of cities need trees as much or more as everyone else, and just even thinking of things like asthma, where we have air pollution in cities. And so we have a chance here to do it right. I mean, other cities are looking at how can we put more trees back in the areas. In Durham, they did a study that the poorer areas have 10% tree coverage and the wealthier areas 50%. But we could be looking at more parks with real trees, saving parts of this forest right now, in the areas that are going to have the densest housing. I don't think Chatham Park is saying, oh, this is where there's going to be low-income housing, but when you think about large lots versus very dense housing, I think we can imagine what would cost more and what would cost less. So I hope you look at these resources. Why plant trees in cities? Because they protect our most vulnerable residents. They're interesting, very thought-provoking, and I think it's a different way of looking at this idea that you can, you can afford trees or you can afford housing, but maybe not both. I think we need to make sure we have both. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Nau?
I just wanted to make a very brief comment about the Parks Recreation Master Plan. I know it's on your agenda, but I read it through, and I want to congratulate Paul and his group on an absolutely superb job in putting this master plan together. And I told Paul before the meeting that that's the kind of a document that would be at the top of the list in communities 10 times as large as this one, so my congratulations. And I think the other thing I want to say about it is we are now at the point in time where we can implement that kind of a plan. As years go by, we will find our options loaded, so I think now is the time to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. John Justin, the next speaker.
Mayor and Commissioners, I want to thank you for maybe three minutes.
Mayor and commissioners, I want to thank you for maybe three minutes, maybe. But I too want to speak to the parks plan, and actually not the plan itself, but the excitement I feel about bringing it to a conclusion. I think it's a good night to close the planning and start the building. Make it your legacy. You guys don't move on it, I don't know, will the next people move on it? So anyway, I'm here because I'm one of the Pittsburgh Quanis members, and the Pittsburgh Quanis Club is interested in investigating whether our land behind our building is suitable for a park in Pittsburgh. I think in our dreams, we'd like to have something that was geared toward kids that are five to nine, kids that are a little bit older than our current parks serves, but not old enough to demand basketball courts and stuff like that. So, and in my personal dreams, I'd like to think that that park would have been designed in part by our local artists and in part by our local autistic group, and in part by those that represent people that have a hard time using traditional playground equipment. I'm not sure what correct term for that is. I'm sure Paul can tell you. But the Pittsburgh Quanis Club has given hundreds of thousands of dollars in scholarships to our youth over the years. We've helped other clubs raise money. We've helped you create the Quanis Park, Little Quanis Park. And we're interested again, and so I'm looking for some direction. I'd like to see you move on with the plan and tell us what you want. So that's why I'm here tonight. And again, I think that tonight will be a good night to shift your attention from planning to implementing, and that's what I'm asking for. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Patty Doos, the next speaker.
Thank you for letting me speak, board. I'm Patty Doos from the UTEJ. I live in Monmouth, and I'm also on the Parks, the Parks and Rec Board. And we have had a very wonderful time working with Paul and seeing the compilation of the future of what we could have as our parks system. I encourage you to please execute those ideas. I hope you've had a chance. I'm sure if you haven't, seen the lovely book that Paul will be glad to go through it with you. We have just great resources here and great motivation to get going, especially with the burgeoning development around us, and we really hope to execute on the ideas that Paul has set forth and the flexibility that that sets forth as well. So it's your legacy, as was just stated, and we really hope that you seize today to actually make it come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And the last speaker is Calvin May.
My name is Calvin. I know y'all have a lot on your plate, so I want to truly thank y'all for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I can't think of a more dynamic and interesting group of people to spend an evening with. All right, well, I see Chatham Park investors as a group of people with a deep wealth of life experiences, an abundance of care and compassion, and a commitment to excellence that spans through every person in their organization. The people of Chatham County are passionately dedicated to the world we call home. We are a people that live and love the forest. We have spent a lifetime caring for and protecting life here along the river. While the river may flow quickly at times, the forest that surrounds it changes slowly. We are now faced with a Chatham County that is much different, that will be much different tomorrow than it is today. And what a blessing it is that we have honorable people that are willing to come together and make both today and tomorrow exceptional. I am fortunate enough to have lived enough to know that there isn't a better way forward for us as a people. There is a way of living that honors and protects the forest, the trees, and nurtures the humanity of the people that live within this forest. I like things written in clear and unambiguous terms, as the words we put down here today lay the foundation for what is to come. I like for us to clearly say why it is that we make this world the way we do. If there is an accurate way of measuring trees that honors both the intent and the effect of the people in this room, then I would hold that as preferable to a convolution of low numbers, unclear connections, and useless regulations. If we are creating an interconnected web of life that holds all of our plans together in continuity, then let us be clear, the connections that we hold as accountable for the strength of our whole, and reinforce the regulatory bodies we put forth with authority. We have the privilege to access a wealth that borders on magic in the forest of our lands. Let us all rise to the height of the trees so that those living here may clearly see the power of what we are creating. So to be clear, the numbers and percentages put forth in the Tree Protection Ordinance are too low. They're just too low. There's a clearly set standard that has been established, and these do not meet that. If we are saying that the open space plan and the margins in the roadways and people's backyards are going to account for that discrepancy between the low numbers and what is acceptable, then prove it. We don't need some backup napkin in the coffee shop estimation of what we're getting. What we're doing is very important for our children, for our grandchildren, and everybody in this room, in the county. And so we need to be sure. If there's a way that we can measure trees and show what it is that their intent actually, the intent actually is, if they say that they're going to get to 55%, put it in writing. Show us the numbers. You have the maps, you have the plans, you have the information. Where are the numbers? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. That draws citizens' matters to a close. The next panel on the agenda is Commissioner and Mayor Updike. And let us start with the update from the town of Pittsburgh, Ron Grieschek, who's updated more.
I had also emailed those to you over the weekend. There haven't been any changes to what you have before you this evening and what you had received over the weekend. I'm sorry, I just a quick mention at the town hall site, you can see the concrete has been removed from the old structure. New gravel material has been laid down, and actually that gravel could be nearly complete. The retaining walls toward the Hank Street side of the property, you can see in the bottom two pictures in the slide, are going to be left in place temporarily. We're going to be doing some soil borings on the other side of those walls on the Hank Street side to kind of try to figure out how much, what kind of condition those soils are and what sort of treatments in terms of supporting wall structures or other treatments would be necessary to keep the integrity of Hank Street intact. So more work to do on that that, beginning initially, we didn't plan on. But getting back to the gravel that's on site now, we should be soon putting down some sort of striping just to kind of add some definition to the parking, which isn't really, I don't want to engage in conversation necessarily on asphalt versus not asphalt, but we do need some sort of lineage out there to delineate parking areas. So it's not optimal, but it's going to be necessary, so we'll be sorting through that soon. Some more comments about Town Hall, or at least the design of the new Town Hall. We've met with Hobbs on interior layout, particularly starting at the first floor. That's the, as you recall, that's where the town will have quite a bit of its public facing operations. Hobbs also has exterior concepts. They'd like to get some input from the board, starting with the board, I believe, the first week of April. What they'd like to do is actually get you guys out of a board meeting setting and, you know, conduct a guided workshop, I guess. So if you don't mind, I'll circle back with you on that, because that's, they've got some ideas, so they want some of your ideas as well, and so continue the design process. Budget work is charging forward. We plan on, as I indicate here, we plan on distributing the initial budget at the May 13th meeting on that same night. I'd like to set the public hearing for the May 28th meeting. It's going to be, I'm sorry, the annual budget. We'd like to distribute the initial budget, the initial copy of the budget on the May 13th meeting. On that same night, we'll set the public hearing for the May 28th meeting. And so we have additional time during the month of June to review, make corrections, and have it approved. I think initially, we were looking at having it approved first meeting in June. If that's not realistic, obviously, we can go until the end of June legally before we have to have it locked in place at that time. You recall that this Thursday, there's a retreat scheduled from 9:00 AM to, we need to go until 5:00. But if you want to go till 5:00, we can go till 5:00. So that's why I put the question mark there, and that's here at Town Hall. Focus is going to be updates, future planning with departments. Watch will be provided. The UDO workshop, there's an additional workshop for the UDO process scheduled for April 15 here at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. I made a note about Chatham Parkway, because I received a question, too, on that. And that's the portion of Chatham Parkway that's between Business 64 and the 64 bypass. And according to EFT and Chatham Park, the anticipated opening for that is sometime in the fall. There's some work to do in the right ways, dedication work there. That's the best information we have at this point in time. You'll see it, you'll see something that looks like a road, and that's accurate, but it's not ready for primetime yet, so it's not ready to open. And then another thing that I'll mention is that at the last meeting, we did have, you probably had noticed, we did have some issues with connectivity, internet connectivity and network connectivity here at Town Hall, and that seems to have been a problem, more so at night than at other times, although it was kind of slowing down during portions of the day. I had mentioned that evening that we were looking at replacing the router. That router, I guess, predates anyone here, except for Ms. Alice. That router's been replaced, and so.
Ms. Alice predates the internet.
I meant that in terms of, I'll just back away from that now.
I love you, Ms. Alice.
So slowdowns and shutdowns, you should be having right along as far as the internet is concerned. One other comment that I would make as far as this is my inside comments, is that you may have received an email from the Chamber and from the CDC on a joint elected boards meeting that's scheduled for Thursday, April 11, the UAC Center, from 5:30 to 7:00. If you haven't received that, or if you misplaced it or whatever, well, I can just send out a reminder email anyway, at least I'm the one who's based on what I have received. And I guess that's, those are all the comments that I would make at this point in time. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to.
What was that date, yeah, Ron?
That's April 11. That's from 5:30 to 7:00 at the UAC Center. And that's being posted by the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Corporation. And as I said, if you have any questions, let me know now, or we can talk about it a little bit later if necessary, if that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I had the pleasure of sitting in for Michael at the Pittsburgh Business Association meeting, and attended a meeting on the vegetation and curbside spraying of the power lines in Chatham County by Duke Energy, Congress. I have those maps, and if anyone is interested in the areas for trimming and for vegetation, trimming of vegetation and spraying of curbsides, I can make those available. What would be the best vehicle for that? Ron, would you like to have those, or should we pass them on to Jonathan or Dee?
Yeah, we can, we can disintegrate those, and as we discussed before, try to shape those into a public announcement.
On the 19th of March, I had the pleasure of going to have a tour of those old closed, of the new closed roads that Chatham Park is developing, and got to ride on the road going up to the new bridge going across, and it's just an absolutely amazing complex of roads, and it's just a really beautiful ride. Also got to tour the solar plant south of town, and it was just a very interesting tour of the facilities, even the ones that are not particularly ready for travel. Robin Rose took me in the area that's off of Thompson Street where Bailey's Academy and the housing that we've already approved were on that road and the new park area, the new Town Park will be back there. And then on the 21st, Mayor Baris, Siler City, and I spoke at the Bonby School, which was out of jurisdiction, but it sure was a lot of fun. Are there other updates by commissioners who have attended meetings of import during the town's electoral?
Madam Mayor, I appreciate you filling in at the PBA meeting. I heard it was really exciting. Can I get the video of the work? Yeah. So I think overall, it was a very good meeting, even though it maybe wasn't working. Thank you. I mentioned the last meeting that I was going to, the Main Street Conference in Salisbury did that, and while there, ran into the governor and had the opportunity to have a brief chat. And he was and is very supportive of the whole Main Street program for all of the Main Street players in North Carolina. And he was able to confirm that in fact, his budget that he's put together does include $1 million for the town of Pittsburgh. And that would be going toward a downtown vision plan. It's very exciting. Hopefully, that money will survive, and we have it to obviously put forth our downtown visions, and that'd be fantastic. Also mentioned that the art for the handrails is completed, and I'm extremely excited about it. We hope to have handrails pulled down, painted, refurbished, suited with the public art by middle of May. And I understand that we, the recycling bins, we have three more coming. I think they're here. Put that through the grapevine.
Yeah, I think we have it in the garage.
Okay.
Do we have a place to put them?
Yeah, I was, I guess, walking with John.
Okay.
Yeah. So, can you try this out?
Sure.
First thing in the morning or end of the day would be great for me. That's why I have to make sure.
Thank you. Other reports?
I attended Chatham Arts Council meeting, and just thought I'd mention a couple of events that are coming up. One is Clyde Fest, which is a very popular event. It's geared towards young children, and it has very sweet, old-fashioned artsy fun in honor of folk artist Clyde Jones, and that's going to be. in honor of folk artist Clyde Jones, and that's going to be, I'm not sure if you can say it right, Saturday, April 6th, from 11:00 to 4:00. And then we're also, Chatham Arts Council is hosting an event with renowned folk artist Cher Schaper, which I'm very excited about. She's one of my favorite folk artists outside of ours. And that is going to be, I'm not sure if you can say it right, Friday, May 3rd through May 5th. It's going to be at the, it's going to be at one of the events representative. The Roseberry House, then, in reference. Thank you.
The Triangle J Council of Government. The actual meeting will not be held on Wednesday. It will actually be Legislative Day, where we will go to the legislature and speak with different members of the, representatives of the purpose of it, as well as senators on different issues. So that is an all-day event, scheduled to start at 10 until around 6:30.
All right. Next is our old business. The first matter is the fiscal policy guidelines. Heather Leach, our finance director, will be in touch with you about those guys.
Good evening. This is a policy that we first brought, that I first brought back in March of 2017, and we discussed it briefly. I made a few minor word changes in it, and then it sort of got tabled, because we didn't have further discussion on it. So I'm bringing it back now. If you, I'm curious to know what questions or concerns you have.
Have we changed anything from will to should?
Yes.
It can be must.
We did receive in the interim, Mr. Metzger, I believe, you had given us a memorandum about the law on shall must and will and may.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Does anybody need any clarification of those words? Questions for Heather?
Heather, I think it's an excellent document. I appreciate it. And I did have a phone conversation to have today. I had a phone discussion with clarification upon. And it has to do with what is called net debt. And the recommendation, well, net debt is measured as a percentage of the value of ad-borrowed taxes. So if anything, if it's taxed in ad-borrowed fashion, is the amount of money by which we would state a maximum percentage of to have in debt. And based on our budget for 2018, 19, one cent of tax produces $55,000. So if you do the math on that, our total valuation within the town of property for ad-borrowed taxes is $552 million. If, as written, we have in the document a 2.5% maximum net debt, that equals $13 million. And knowing what we have ahead of us, I thought it would be wise to increase that amount. And my original thought was to go to 5%. Heather explained to me she was not really comfortable with that number.
Nor am I.
Nor am I.
For what that's worth?
Yeah, well, clearly, a lot. But I would like to, and I think what Heather had mentioned was 3.5%, and that would generate, that would allow us 19 million. And I think, as I said, I would have gone to 5, but I definitely want to increase it to 2.5, and 3.5 is a good step. So I would make a motion to approve that adjustment to 2.5%.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Can I make a comment? If we increase it to 3.5, then I would also recommend, because I have another percentage in there, about our debt service costs in the bullet point right below, not to exceed 15% of our expenditures. So we would also want to increase that percentage, because that is the debt payment, the monthly, I mean, the yearly payment that we're having. So probably, we'd want to increase that to at least 18 or 18% maybe.
Okay. Well, I will head my motion to approve that adjustment as well.
I have a question.
Sorry, do you feel comfortable with the 3.5%?
Yes.
I'd like to know what your concern is.
Yes, so, well, my concern is, I mean, we don't want to have, obviously, too much debt, because the more debt, I mean, the higher our payments, then potentially, we have to use either more of our tax revenue, or we have to increase our tax revenue to pay for that, and then we pay less for other services. And technically, the LGC allows us to go up to 8% for bond, like if we have a bond issue. This, this 3.5, and a bond issue, you guys could approve a bond issue and override this policy and take us up to 8%. Really, we don't want to do that if we were, if we had maybe other revenue that was coming in, or if we had a significant increase. The other thing to keep in mind, though, is as our test value goes up, or as our property, the taxable property within the town limits goes up, that percentage is going to go up. So right now, it's at 18, 19 million, at that 3.5, but that can increase with the more taxable value, granted, we will also then getting more tax revenue. So, no, and I talked with Commissioner Fioke earlier, and I'm okay with 3.5. I don't really want to go above 3.5.
Any other questions, or your questions?
No, that was my question also.
What is the current total net debt percentage?
Well, right now, the only debt we have on the general fund side are for some vehicles. So, I mean, the current debt that we have...
So it's negligible?
Yes.
Most of it, then, is associated with the water and sewer systems?
Correct, which is covered by the income that we get from our water and sewer fees.
Michael, would you restate your motion, so we can get a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy guidelines, with the increase from 2.5% for net debt to 3.5% to increase our debt service costs not to exceed 18%.
My motion by Michael Fioke, I'll take it if I have a question, Paul. So, Madison, do you have anything to add? I just wanted to hear, I just wanted to hear Mr. Bruce's opinion about that.
Yeah, this is, everything that Heather said, I am in line with. The only other thing I would add is that debt is expensive, and, you know, to Mr. Commissioner Fioke's point, with all the things that we have going on, we will be borrowing, and if we push it as high as, say, 5%, that may make borrowing money more difficult and more expensive. And so the 3.5, I think is, I appreciate where he's coming from, 3.5, I think is a good compromise. Is that clear as mine?
Yes, that's good. Thank you. Any other questions? As in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the person carrying the hand. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, Brian, please. I can borrow to your practice in recreation, Master Fien.
Well, this has been a process that's ongoing for two years, so I'm going to go through a little bit of a summary of the plan, just to reflect on the... Hi, Greg, please, stand here. We had, I feel, one of the best parks planners in the country working on this plan is our consultant, David Barr. He has credentials in the landscape architecture realm, has a PhD. He has credentials in the park planning realm, as well as an AICP planner. But he's, really focuses on high-level planning, not your typical, you know, do we need tennis courts versus basketball courts kind of level thinking that a lot of project plans are involved in. So we're very likely to add him to work on this project, I think. First chapter is the introduction, it kind of goes over the general purpose of a plan, and it provides a philosophy which envisions, well, the specific purpose of this plan is to provide, to meet existing and future needs for parks, to provide revision for a broader interconnected public realm, and a strategy to implement that vision over time. I skipped through some of this stuff for your, you know, get at it earlier. But some of the philosophy and core beliefs are that parks are really core infrastructure, that necessary infrastructure. And this quote from Frederick Bollens, that sums it up nicely, "The park exercises are very different and much greater influence upon the progress of a city and its general structure than any other ordinary public work." And I think that's so true on so many levels, whether it's in the economic realm, in the health realm, in the ecological realm, in the social connectedness, and the neighborliness of your interactions with people, certainly with soil and water. So that is all encompassing. And when you look at historic precedent in Pittsboro, which was founded even as a resort town, the riverboats could come up to Moncur, and that was the part of this they could get. And at the time, the coast was very hot, and the street was laden, and people, wealthy people from the coast would come to Pittsboro and have a resort town, and that's how the town was funded, founded. But the plan really envisions a broader conception of parks as a core part of any city. And when we talk about an interconnected public realm, that's not just your typical parks, that involves all public infrastructure and public spaces within the community. So that may be your waterfront along the Hall River playgrounds, your historic buildings, your library, pocket parks, etc., greenways themselves. And this plan envisions these facilities not just as individual facilities, but a greater thing that, and the interconnectedness of these facilities really makes the city, human centers pleasant town, convenient, pleasant place to get in. If you look at Savannah, Georgia, the local board created this plan in 1818, and it envisioned squares where all of these residents had equal access to a park of fairly equitable quality. They also had a lot of open space around the town, and a great grid, gridded street network, which means you can, if there's a blockage here, or a fire, something, you can get along easily through other routes, and it's very efficient for provision of infrastructure. And low and behold, look at Pittsboro, it starts off with the Lancaster Town Square. There was an open space that was used for grazing and recreation and escape from the city at that time. You had the community house built in the 1930s, 1934-ish. You had the mills that were invested in baseball to keep their residents and their workers happy and engaged and not revolting, and staying pretty content and improving their lives in a real way, in a wholesome way. And they envisioned streets as places, the streets were places, you know, the front porch, your front porch was somewhere, it wasn't just a add-on for looks, it was somewhere that people actually met and talked to each other and learned about the news of the day. So we want to build on that historic tradition of Pittsboro, being really having a robust public realm that we've had for so long, as we continue to expand this town park. So the planning process, how did we get here? We started out really looking at all of the, well, we're going to go into this in more depth, but went through an existing system analysis and needs assessment, a long-range vision, and an implementation plan. I'll go through that more again. And this has been a, again, it's a two-year process, but it's been very much transparent. We had a great online engagement section, which involved interactive maps, where you could add in, people could log in and place where they thought they'd like to see a park or a greenway or a blueway, and really engage in more in-depth conversation than you can just with the normal poll or surveys. You had discussion of community numbers, and you could really get into more depth. You know, it's not scientific with value, you can't, it is what it is, it's anecdotal data, but it's very, very valuable anecdotal data, and something you don't always get with these types of plans. It's a tremendously long process, and here we are, hopefully, facing adoption tonight. But a lot of, a lot of the public meetings and check-ins throughout. We went through with existing conditions, studying the planning context, reviewing existing documents, demographics and lifestyle tapestry. The lifestyle tapestry is a demographic method used more by business, really, than a lot of local government. It's really looking at market characteristics of your population. I thought that was a really fascinating part of the plan. We did an evaluation of our current system, and looked at comparable communities and based in kind of similar growth. Where's a small town that has the master plan development coming in? How did they, how did they do that well? And we looked at some local examples that you're all familiar with, Southern Village and Briar Chapel, which married some of that pretty successfully, and are known nationally as pretty good examples. And I guess the bigger picture of planning context, China's going to be adding 300 million people in the next 20 years. As we go from 4,000 to 60,000, they're going to be going that at an exponential scale. So getting cities right is very important, and, you know, we're part of, we're part of that big picture, and even part of this mega region here, and you're seeing it now with the rapid growth in the Triangle, we're part of that, and we very much fit in. We have an opportunity, as Jim asked, to do it right now, we can, we're at that juncture. We looked at any kind of plan that was related to parks and recreation, and then some, from both the town and the county, including the plan Chatham Comprehensive Land Use Plan for the county. And it's interesting, because this green ring that they envisioned of conservation-type land is one that we'll see in our greenway plan later. Obviously, a lot of this is outside of our jurisdiction, but all of this is. We looked at, for our park evaluations, we really looked at a pretty comprehensive view of it, and how they function as places. Are they pleasant places to hang out in? Are they well-maintained? And it's a robust section, I encourage you to look through that. But we found out where we're doing well and where we need to improve. Access is certainly one where we need to improve. We need sidewalks to the parks, and greenways to the ability... ability for people in wheelchairs to be able to interact. We looked through the, our existing ordinance as well as the unified development ordinance draft that we had at the time, and made recommendations for those. I'll point out that we have two mayors in this photo, former Mayor Terry as well as Mayor Perry. And this is at the opening of Kate Vernon Park, which Michael Piatek was, was very much a part of. So this plan, you know, we tried to, this is the concise version, right? The, the research and the background information is easily, you know, tremendously huge. And this, this is the scientifically valid survey that was done as part of this plan. And we used both the scientifically statistically valid survey, as well as the online engagements, as well as public meeting, individual interviews with stakeholders, focus groups. All of these different methods, which luckily all lined up pretty darn well. And I think your people of Pittsboro, through all of these different methods, the trend lines are all the same. Again, we did a robust online engagement portion. We had a great economic development forum with the EDC here. And we had Sig Hutchinson, Chair of Wake County Board of Commissioners, who's amazing and a huge advocate for open space and greenway development in Wake County. Jody Lyod, who was responsible for a lot of the great design in Briar Chapel, and really focusing on accessibility of parks so that every resident within that community is within a five-minute walk to some type of park. And we had Kyle Touchton, who went through really the, how specifically parks are good for the bottom line of the community, whether that's through attraction and retention of businesses, attraction of retirees, increased tax value through proximity to parks, tourism, all of that. And these are some of the results of those trend lines. So these were the top seven priorities for facilities that people really wanted. Walking and biking trails, sidewalks with street trees and benches, restrooms at existing parks. That's huge, and certainly for Kiwanis Park where you have a target market of little kids and their parents, mothers trying to change a dirty diaper without, you know, in a porta potty is just a park. So that was a, that was a huge need. Aquatics was a big one, indoor aquatic facility, outdoor swimming pools, water parks, indoor laplands for exercise swimming, and then indoor running and water track. This just goes through beyond the top seven, and some of the next ones were indoor fitness, passive natural areas, nature centers, off-leash dog parks, picnic shelters, et cetera. And these are, you know, considered to have 95% confidence with a plus or minus 5.6 margin of error. This is the results for programs. Most people wanted community events. Adult fitness and wellness programs, which I think very much represents our, our demographics, age of this population. Water fitness programs, kayak canoe and paddleboard programs. I have Joe in the background here, he owns a kayak company. Adult continuing education programs, interestingly enough. Robust departments like Kerry, Apex, they have great senior centers that offer so many, so many huge things. And people are so active after they're retired that that's, that's a huge thing. And also just for the type of things that the Henry College offers, just kind of enhance them in learning. Nature programs, environmental education, special events for adults only. Maybe the Kany Street dinner thing will be, will be good for that. Senior programs, outdoor adventure programs, arts, dance, performing arts. And population was willing to pay more taxes. The sweet spot seemed to be $6 to $7 more per month. About 70% of the population was willing to do enough to, to pay for their, their top priorities that they paid. 80% of people supported acquiring land to preserve natural areas to develop existing parks and recreation facilities. That's pretty much a national trend, too. People feel like you've already invested in these parks. You have them, maximize those really, in addition to building new facilities, really take care of what you have, develop that fully. 79% developed the greenways and trails enhancing connectivity and acquired land to support regional trail along the Hall River. And when people were asked what they'd really be willing to put their money behind, top answers were developing greenways and trails and aquatics facilities. I think a lot of the reason for that is that everybody can access trails, right? Everybody can walk or run along a trail. A lot of people can use aquatics. A lot of people can use sidewalks and street trees every day, especially if it's to the destination. So those things tend to nationally be the most popular things for how they build everybody. And this is some of the anecdotal type information that I was, that I was talking about. And really finding out, we asked, what do you love about Pittsboro? And the larger the text, the more number of votes those phrases or words got. And it gives a real sense of what people value here. Small-town deal, organic farmers, small-town sensibilities, artists, et cetera. Locally-supported artists and farms, arts. Again, nothing particularly scientific about that, but I think if you do any kind of marketing study of Pittsboro, you're going to, it's going to be consistent with those types of things. All of that background information feeds into the long-term vision that we're letting out. We started that out with a very, and it, thanks to Allison and Brian distributing a letter from the Health Department endorsing this project. We started the vision section with a focus on health and really looked through scientifically, what scientifically supported actions of enhancing the public realm are tied into better health outcomes. And it's not only three or four pages, but it's very concise and very high-level. We kind of know how to do this. We know how to build walkable communities, bikeable communities. And Richard Jackson, Dru in this field, quote, says, "Of all the interventions that could counter health epidemics, none works as well as increased physical activity, particularly when carried out with nature. Yet, if we continue to design and build America in ways that are hostile to walkers and bicyclists, creating an America without parks and without safe routes for walking or biking to destinations such as schools and workplaces, we are unlikely to see better physical and mental health." And that's really important. And we used some of the best material out there, the board from this, Finding Urban Design Guidelines. It's great. This was material from 2008, but it's still some of the best park planning material out there. So much research and best practices, a lot of information from the National Parks Recreation Association went into the ideas and best practices and benchmarking that were used for this plan. We had, so once, once, in the needs assessment, we refined those topics down to six subsections. And we invited people with interest or expertise in those areas to come in for focus groups to help refine the vision within those specific topics. I had a broad cross-section of people involved with that. And some of the topics were really our top priorities, so greenways and walkability and connections, increasing our, improving existing parks, adding new parks, aquatics, different, different topics. I'm starting with this one, bicycle, pedestrian connectivity. And here I'm going to point out the green ring again, that Chatham County has endorsed in their land use plan and then reiterated in their recently passed Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. And I took that a little further by breaking up each section and naming it. So when they're being approved or considered for development, you can take a tangible little chunk and say, okay, we're, we live along here. We really want to see this park done. We're going to make that happen. Certainly a lot of opportunity along the Rock Rocky and deep. Even though, again, this is outside of our jurisdiction, I think in order to really get the big picture, you need to, to see that in its entirety, along with all of the other connections innovating throughout the town. One of the outcomes from that focus group was to develop a bike way, bikeways and trails master plan, which would go through various standards for, for those facilities. It looks at the increasing bicycling and notes that a lot of the market is interested, but they're not willing to get out and bike if they don't feel safe. It's kind of common sense, right? But there's a lot of research backing that up. So that's the target market that we want to get, the interested but concerned. So if Chatham Park designs with sidewalks and greenways built in and hopefully connections to the town, I think we're going to capture a lot of that market. The guy, you know, walks his dog in his car, you know, they're a lost cause for cycling, but it's okay. So there are ways to determine those, what people are willing to do through traffic stress tests. And we may get into some of that with our pedestrian plan that's, that's over seeing now for the DFT and with Alto Incorporated. People are very interested in the Harwood Trail, of course, because it has a regional system that connects to other places. Next to focus was on improvements to existing parks, again, restrooms. And give up with a list of kind of categories. All of our parks should have, you know, some of these basic things. Restrooms, water, power, infrastructure for special events, shade trees and canopies, real, real basic things, picnic shelters, different types of seating, drinking fountains, universal access, greenway access. And really focused also on quality over quantity. So even a posaic bathroom can really set the tone. So it's not just a generic, I mean, it's a functional place that can also be an inspiring, beautiful place that's also functional. I think one of the best park systems embody that. Sidewalk and greenway access, the safe access to and within all parks is a basic requirement and was noted as one of the deficiencies for many of our existing parks. So we're doing a lot of things really well in our parks. That was, that was one of our main deficiencies. As we develop and update, as we consider improving our existing parks, the first step is really updating master plans for all existing parks. And the board has approved a master plan for the park on Red Creek Street as well as the Kiwanis Park. So that's a good start to really analyzing how to best make use of all of these existing spaces. As Mr. Justice mentioned earlier, they're, they're interested in expanding this park. This is the existing playground, and this area here is, is open for consideration of, of expanding that park. And we're about to kick off that design process and surveying and maybe some basing clearing to better see what we have, and that process is underway. I'll point out that this is part of this plan, and I'm a planner, but I did plan this trip on Valentine's Day somehow. And, but we went to Apex Skate Park, which is really quite a fascinating story. There was a police officer who was warning a kid who's skating in this driveway not to skate. And he goes like, well, what am I supposed to do? I can't skate my own driveway. It's like, no, that's your problem. And walked off, but then felt really bad. He walked him back to his car and went back and said, okay, you know, you're right. You know, what point did he get a skate park on? So, you know, the park director laid out a great program for us. He had that officer, as well as the elected official, who is also a designer, Kristi Hilt, who designed this facility. And on a, in the middle of winter, at night, there's turf field over here, a walkway along here, lit, there's police call boxes. That place was packed. Cold, dark, winter day, place was completely full, right downtown Apex. And the elected official said, yeah, that's just how much we value our children in Apex, and this is a reflection of our values as a town. So really great trip, and I think it inspired a lot of the skate park advocates here to hear that concept. And right now, the skate park is envisioned for down here somewhere, but it's a really small spot. So we may want to consider working with the Sheriff's Department to expand that way of that. That's mostly storage facilities for them now. So they may be amenable to, to doing that, expanding it out this way and getting able to have all three of those features there. But that's, that can be explored as we, as we delve into the master plan for that project. Our tennis courts also, they're not in the best of shape. They're going to need a lot of work. That's something we can, we'll have to address.
Paul, while you're on that, I'm looking at the park. Is there any chance of having that shelter repaired? I know that we have a slab down there in that corner. Got four posts on it with no shelter. It was a shady park.
Yeah, we've got a shady park. Absolutely. We can accommodate anything.
This looks kind of odd like that down there.
Yeah, the, the-
We need to lick it up permanent.
Well, let's discuss that. One idea for getting, I think the skate park is such a huge investment and requires so much space and so many steps. Now, the local group has raised about $60,000, but they're kind of, it's been a long time. Some of the families are aging out. And it's kind of too big of a delta between starting out point 60K and then, you know, total final extent. So what ideas to bring in some kind of pre-dyn造的 street skate facilities to just generate more interest and get people places to play? We've got, as you well know, kids get out of school at around 3:00 o'clock, and then they go downtown. And they don't have anything to do. They don't have program, structures programming here. So they go downtown and hang out in front of S and T. So these types of facilities will give them something a little more directed and, and hopefully, hopefully bust their head on it. Town Lake Park, Dr. Barth was really enamored with that park and felt that it has probably the most potential of all of our parks. And, you know, getting through a master plan for that is, is the first step. And he had some ideas here. We've been clearing, this is perfect weather, weather for, for clearing invasives and vines. We've been, we've started out just clearing along this, this edge here. It makes a huge difference. The trees are budding out enough to where you can identify them really easily. The trees are budding out enough to where you can identify them really easily and, but you don't have the snakes and the nasty weather and, and all the negativities of summer. So we have a window where even just clearing that out gives much better views and gets rid of invasive species that are, that are just dominating a lot of that park. So it's, it's a long process and a long slog, but you know, start somewhere and we're making progress with that now. But a master plan will really re-envision that and it'd be great to widen that sportsfield there to have more room.
All of us are going to say, I had the pleasure of doing one of the tree walks with Kim Cuffin in the Town Lake Park. And it was great to see how many people are out enjoying that park, like kids riding on their bicycles and older people, it was really great to see the zonza, great to see the trout lily patch wild and quite impressive.
Right.
We saw lots of wildlife and really a beautiful, beautiful place to be on a Sunday afternoon.
Well, I should mention, you've probably seen the boardwalk over here, we're talking with someone now about fixing that and maybe pulling out this other boardwalk and widening the trail so that we can get back there with gators to maintain these areas better. And if we can eliminate this boardwalk entirely, that would be really the safest thing to do. So slow progress just through operations.
I'm like, can we divide in all commissioners to be there to do that tree walk?
Developing new parks, we've really looked at distinguishing between two broad categories. Local parks, which are small, easily reproducible and can serve really local needs. So Mary Hayes Barber Holmes Park is a 10 acre park. It's really, it serves, it serves every need now because it's, you know, we own so many parks. But it's really designed to handle the community of Town Lakes. And that's the kind of small local park that, that that's describing. And then you have parks that are meeting more regional needs. That's your sports complex is your big community parks. Yes, you can get a bit of a niche of all kinds of park classifications from our TA. But these two, looking at it in this way, via a book that explored LA and looked at using this method versus what they did and wishing that they had done this. Equity model, we're looking for a half mile walk, 10 mile walk park standard within the town so that everybody can walk to a local park within a 10 minute standard. And that each of those parks are going to be relatively equally apportioned. So all neighborhoods will have a basic tier of amenities that, that will be available. And equity is a huge part of the National Parks Recreation Association. It's one of the pillars that it stands on and that equal access is huge and we have an opportunity to do that. And we have pretty good access now in, in some places, but not so great in others. This again gets back to kind of a basic set of amenities for all of our parks. And those are more types of facilities. So some type of multi-use field that can be used for different things, some type of sports court, some type of trail, some type of paved trails as well as secondary and tertiary trails that are, you know, maybe in the natural areas or wooded places, playgrounds. So that we say, okay, well, we need a local park here, what's that going to contain? Well, it's going to contain at least these basic core elements. If you want to start adding splash pads and climbing walls and, you know, a lot of the more creative, great stuff, absolutely do it. But you've got to have this basic stuff and you have to have a good mix of things to provide a space that's really accessible to everybody and appealing to everybody. I think, you know, absent a sports court at, at Mary Holmes, I see a wide range of people using that facility, from seniors walking their morning walk to kids playing on the playground, soccer practice, et cetera. We did analysis of anticipated new local parks and we're trying to maintain that half mile walk to those and also to the non-local parks, which have a wider radius and will need fewer beds. And these are not set in stone locations, but they're broad guidelines of, okay, here's what we need to be as we're developing. We know we're going to need things in here. The rural area, the more rural areas that are anticipated to be rural, become the life of this plant, you know, is a broader, broader radius for now. By the way, most of these regional parks, we're envisioning Rock Ridge being a regional park as it's more fully developed and many of these other ones are ones that Chatham Park is, is already committed to. We also looked at alternative provider parks and that, we looked at existing alternative providers as well as anticipated new ones. This material, a lot of the areas within Chatham Park or from Chatham Park, they presented to the board and said, okay, here's how we're going to do our Parks and Recreation needs. We're going to use a mix of private parks as well as, as well as public. So these are from their presentations and those may not be, again, like our plan, may not be exactly in this font, but their plan to meet the needs to look at some of those things. And we need to continue with the private providers or necessarily private, could be school system facilities, just to understand what we have to work with going forward and where we don't need to overlap. So that's a worthwhile, worthwhile endeavor. Again, kind of bringing back to the structure of this, these are still the focus groups and that we're doing, this is a fourth one, athletic fields. And we kind of went through with a lot of sports people in the community and there was consensus that we really needed to be focusing on competition in recreational fields, which are not going to be where host massive tournaments with, you know, super expensive perp and drainage and everything, but more fields that can meet basic recreation needs. So those local parks are going to be, you know, relatively basic. But community parks will start getting maybe perp fields. Southern Community Park has recently updated their fields, one of their fields to perp, which would, you know, are new monstries and that's going to be invaluable for people that actually be able to get out there and use them without restoring fields. So a lot of the athletic fields, they will need to cluster so that you can host a tournament. This is a park designed by Withers, Robin Allen Apex. And it shows a clustering along these sports facilities together so that you would go there and use all of theirs. But note also, while there are, you know, intense specific facilities, there's also some other areas and ponds and perimeter trails and it's a pretty good, seems to be for playgrounds here, a pretty good space that would, would not be exclusively for those And I'll say too, even though sports fields didn't rank particularly highly in our, in our surveys, again, I think that's a reflection of the, of their demographics and there'll certainly be more needs for sports fields and maybe the baseball needs and soccer needs can tell you the other, they're cobbling together, build all over the place now. Recreation Aquatic Center, there's so many amazing aquatics facilities now, but we're envisioning, Chatham Park is pretty, they're going to work with the county CA in the eastern part of town. And the county's keen on doing something with us and with the senior center, near the existing senior center. So that's another possibility of, 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 which comes first. We'll have to work on that. This is kind of more laying the vision for that, a long period of time. Natural Area Conservation was another focus group. And really we, we just said, look, if you're going to start a conservation program, you really need three things. Dedicated source of funding, an appointed committee to establish protection criteria and review and prioritize lands for protection and net rent list of lands for protection based on evaluation criteria. So some of that's been started with a green printing effort done by the NC Wildlife Resources Commission and the Nicholas Institute of Environmental Policy Stations Solutions at Duke. And they've identified a lot of the most significantly, significant natural heritage areas and areas that are highest priorities via their criteria. So that's a good starting point, whether, if you want to have a conservation program, you're going to need to identify what's the best of the best, what you, what do you really need to preserve and then, you know, what's top priorities, you know, ranking of those areas. So we have a good starting point. We can continue that, sure the town want to. Operations, maintenance and programming, there's still more planning to, to be done to figure out what we want to do when we grow up in many respects in terms of department, developing a department. Currently, you're, you're looking at the department, so you can grow a little bit. But we looked at benchmarking, 84% of agencies offer summer camps, 55% of agencies offer after-school care, this is nationally. Typically have about close to eight full-time employee equivalents per 10,000 residents. Downtown Signature Parks and Cultural Arts, obviously in Pittsburgh, that's a huge, a huge part of who we are and what we are along with conservation and natural areas. And the consensus, I think this focus group was a broader topic, so I don't think we narrowed in and focused in as much as some of the other ones, just because it's too big of a thing to, to address in some respects. But there was consensus that, you know, we wanted spaces that could hold performing arts, farmers markets covered with utilities, preferably indoor and outdoor rental spaces, visual arts, visitor center, that type of thing. It sounds like Mosaic in some ways is really kind of creating some of that private downtown park within Mosaic and it'd be interesting to see how that turns out and there could be a comparable thing for, for downtown Pittsburgh as well. They're, they're doing that because it's economically successful and it's, it's going to attract people to that development because of its quality of place. So certainly won't want to do that in, in Old Pittsburgh as well. I don't think they call it Old Pittsburgh, but it's.
Existing.
Legacy Pittsburgh.
It's gone.
Regional. There you go. So these are just fancy dollar parks down here. But this might ask for, for. And the park, this plan is mainly one Pittsburgh because it really seeks to have a unified and integrated public realm so that you have less legacy Pittsburgh and then new Chatham Park, you have a weaving of that together. And not only, you know, philosophically, okay, we're welcoming our neighbors, okay, well, we have a green wave that actually connects them. There's activity centers and village centers, let's, let's keep those connected. So that's really big picture where this plan is going. And the key principles of the One Pittsburgh framework are partnerships, equitable access, recreation programs, walkable vibrant centers, central gathering places, interconnected streets and trails, high performance public places, which means that all of the places are, are contributing to society ecologically, financially, socially and health-wise. So you're asking a lot of your public spaces, it's not kind of leftover stuff, it's contributing infrastructure, contributing to your, to your talent in real tangible ways. Through integrated stormwater treatment facilities and maintaining our existing acreage level of service, we have a, a level of service now that's comparable to Harry and as we build it, it's reasonable to, so yeah, well, we think we want to maintain our quality of life as expressed through our acreage of parkland for population. And you can shape patterns of development through open space. So once you start looking at things through the lens of, say, of Briar Chapel, where you're really planning your community around these public spaces and parks, it does start to shape your land uses and your choices, particularly if you start looking at return on investment and tax value per square foot, that type of thing. It's certainly possible, a lot of Olmsted studies and Olmsted park systems were, were definitely planned and shaped around, around the parks and arenas. In fact, the term parkway was just that, it was a facility linking two parks, it was just a, a road. So the long range math combines all of the, all of the other things, but in a way that's, you know, fairly legible in that sort of plan with all of the things that led up to that end as well. And though this plan's heavy on vision, it's meaningless if it, if it doesn't actually get implemented. So it does lay out a pretty grounded implementation plan as well. But it's phased and multifaceted, so it's not all at once. We don't need to bump up to 6% yet, we can do things gradually and incrementally. First thing is adding additional park staff and creating a Parks and Recreation Department Strategic Plan for Operations Programming and Maintenance. Include a 25 year funding plan that includes multiple sources of capital funding for parkland acquisition and development. So strengthening our CFP that Brian's already starting for the overall town, have one for parks as well and really encourage parks within that overall CFP plan in a very real way, not as wishes, but how we're going to do this, what are our priorities? Updating subdivision regulations to, to have new development help meet the needs of park creation, Parks and Recreation needs for new development. So if they're developed, they provide some facility, whether they're public or private or whatever those end up being. And partnering with other agencies, we're lucky to have Chatham County Parks Recreation and Senior Center, a lot of nonprofits that we can partner with immediately to, to start making things happen. We're doing some ping pong senior programming with the Council of Asia. We work pretty closely with the county rent department currently, but there's certainly for conservation lands or long range trails, regional trails, we're going to work with, we're partners. Land acquisition and capital improvements in accordance with funding plan. So those are kind of the big picture implementation plan, but there's also a short term. These are more level of service standards for facilities, so we, we won't necessarily go building a pool next year. You know, we're still a 4,500 people community right now, so we'll need these larger facilities as we continue to, to rise in population. But we're still going to need local parks and improve our existing park system, greenways and conservation lands now, so. And this just gets back to Briar Chapel, where the example that uses, you've got a five minute walk in addition to their trails and miles of the wildlife trail. And that they develop their community around. And that they develop their community around parks, which is admirable. This lays out the executive roles and responsibilities for developers. And one thing to note is, you guys, we're going through the plan, these are recommendations, but the board would obviously have to vet and approve and go through a process before following these recommendations, or you may end up following different recommendations. But these are a good framework for how to think about these things. But there would be opportunities before we increase the budget or change the unified development ordinance or policies for this plan, the board would have to agree that every step of the way. So every subsequent step of this vision, it's kind of like you have a master plan for Chatham Park and the individual elements, insight plans, and you're already in the line. This is the same type of thing here. So it's just the idea of concurrence, that as you have new development, that new development contributes to the park infrastructure. States like Florida mandate it with adequate public facilities ordinance, that has some pros and cons. Again, this is a framework for how to think about those things. Yeah, those initial things sound too huge to get a handle on. We have a short-term action plan as well, which includes hiring additional Parks Recreation staff to begin implementing this master plan, develop a Parks Recreation Department strategic plan to determine the most appropriate model of organization for service delivery now and in the future, and to update the UDO and subdivision regulations to incorporate, I'm actually redundant, you know, with subdivision regulations, but to incorporate the recommendations and standards from this plan. Could also begin the development of a 25-year phased funding plan based on anticipated housing starts, population projections, and new level of service standards. We'd hire consultants to develop the citywide sidewalks, bikeways, trails, and master plans, which we have some of that now with the DOT plan underway, to establish prioritization criteria and design and implement top priority corridors based on available funding. And again, the DOT plan is mostly looking at state highways. It's funded by DOT, thus certainly. And then also develop and implement master plans for the town's existing parks. And again, we're already underway with that with the Park Directory Street and also Coannis, and we think that's well underway and the right approach for now. We can begin to plan a future recreation aquatics center. So we start working with the YBCA, Chatham Park, Senior Center, and saying, okay, well, how can we find a living situation here? Those conversations still need to happen. And we can expand the area recreation providers page of the Parks and Recreation website. That's easily done, I think I posted it on Facebook this morning, someone's compilation of summer camps offered in Chatham County, which is pretty good, so that could be incorporated to the more permanent website as well, that kind of thing. This was an interesting one, meet with other recreational program providers to determine their interest in meeting Pittsburgh residents' priority program needs, including adult fitness wellness programs, water fitness programs, climate change, et cetera, et cetera. So looking at other providers to help partner with whatever Pittsburgh will ultimately provide. I think the one thing I'd point out there is that you really want a public component of that to be more equitable. I just watched a video that, you know, the pay-to-play model for sports is just kids are paying $175 an hour to go to facilities and train, whether it's baseball or soccer. And, you know, the not even poor kids, but just middle-class kids are just, you know, if you have that disparity that, you know, you've been training for all of your life to play soccer, and then, okay, well, there's a school system, you can play in the school, but if you can't really compete, even if you have natural palate, you can't compete with someone who's been training for so long, with the best trainers and yada yada, then it's a disturbing thing that we're seeing with a lot of the incorporation of our, with private sector, since they're profit-driven, which is great, but you also need a public component that says, hey, we want to meet basic needs, we want to have a basic recreation program that can teach kids how to play, you know, good skill sets, not follow the ball around. And then if a travel league wants to pick those, best of those off, great, let them do that, let them make a profit, let those kids really excel, but we need a basic public system to provide basic needs. So that's one that's yes, but with that caveat. And then start to identify and acquire sites for local parks within the town's corporate limits. And we're starting to do that as new development comes on anyway with projects. Already, this plan is serving, and it's not adopted just as general, you know, we're going to do something here isn't controversial, and as new development comes in, we're saying, you know, we're going to, you know, we're going to need a local park within your project as well as greenways and that kind of thing that are just going to be required. So this is just a summation of the short-term action plan. And that's it. We're ready with the framework for the future. The next step is to consider adopting this plan. It's my Parks and Growth sponsor. Happy entertaining questions.
Paul, I appreciate you giving us the document in advance, and I've been reading it, and it's a really rich stew. And I remember over my short three-year-plus tenure, being involved with so many of the pieces that have led up to this project. And I remember promoting many of the surveys and the engagement efforts, events on Facebook. So I'm really very excited about it, and I'm ready to work on implementing it.
Great. Very impressive, very friendly. Thank you. I do have a question, kind of a broad question, not really related to this, but hearing you talk about how important it was for people to have conservation areas, and one of the things that people, I have thought about, and I don't know the answer, Pittsburgh's considered a nonprofit. If people wanted to donate money toward conservation in Pittsburgh, is there a way to do that through the Parks and Recreation, through the program that you're talking about of setting aside land? And maybe it's a question for Paul Messick, but I'm just wondering going forward if there might be people in the community who might be willing to donate for this purpose? Is that something that can be earmarked like that?
Well, I believe so. I mean, I think you could do that through the town. You could also form another nonprofit which would be solely focused on that. That's getting more into that service delivery model, but, yeah, I mean, I think that's worth exploring.
Isn't that what Page Garden Park was? It was a combination by the family, was it not?
I guess, I mean, they're thinking of something different, like, yes, that's a great, you can land, but if people, even people wanted to donate $5 here or $10 there, it could come out, if enough people are behind it, it could be taken out of something, kind of like, almost like a GoFundMe sort of thing.
Sure.
Anyway, if you're interested in talking sometime about something like that.
Sure. Or we could do that for the sewer system and put a ton of money in the parks. Either way, there's a ton of different models to do that.
I just found a question about that.
Well, that is a great idea. Well, you identified that a lot of folks said, I'll give you this much money to increase the parks, so maybe you don't raise it with taxes, but you say, okay, well, if you are interested in that, here's our opportunity.
You're right, that's not something that's good. Sorry, this doesn't interest me.
Yeah. Well, if you think back, you mentioned Page Garden Park, and if you think back to the time, I mean, Scott Turner and I worked on, it wasn't called GoFundMe, it was another, it was another application like GoFundMe that we were going to use to contribute money locally to the park. And I think at the end of the day, we found out we did have enough money to do the park after all, so we did end up implementing it. You do see other communities that are very goal-directed using that application. So, for example, Paul's $500,000 restroom made out of corn cobs or whatever it is he's proposing last year could have been funded by a GoFundMe type of effort. And that's really easy for people to kind of latch on to, is that we need those restrooms there, that's help support.
I just think there's a danger of, with that method, you have Parks Recreation as ancillary to core services rather than the primary service that the town would use to express its values, to increase its desirability and marketability.
And I think that's a great point, if you have the money to pay for the core services. If you don't have the money to pay for the core services, then something like restrooms made out of corn cobs do become ancillary.
Sure. Well, I think with the townhouses, so corn cobs were a core part of the townhouses.
True that.
So, but sure, I mean, whatever the funding mechanisms are, ultimately, I think, you know, we did interviews with all of you, and I know that all of you are park supporters and value parks, so, you know, we'll find a way. We're not, there's no magic bullet out there that's going to say, okay, well, here's your funding for this, but it's going to be something that's going to be a little phased, so it's, yes, any kind of bake sales and GoFundMe and those things are great, you know, they're a lot of ways, but one of many other great ways to fund your infrastructure.
That's one or two about going into partnership, but I know we're going to be going into partnership with schools, but also thinking on the county level. Someone had asked me this week about possibly a park behind the Ag Center. You know, there's some nice woods back there, and there's going to be a great place for trails and, I didn't have an answer, but I think that might be, but maybe it's possible to do some kind of partnership, I'm sure you follow that kind of thing, but I did have someone mention that this week.
I think that might be an ideal location for the Aquatics or Recreation Center that the county's envisioning and want to partner with us, so they'd probably be the lead agency there. But we can, obviously, you know, being centrally located, you know, makes sense for a county to have some of their larger facilities in Pittsburgh that would serve, you know, all quarters of the county, but obviously, Pittsburgh residents are also county residents and are paying county taxes, so those things make a lot of sense.
Some pretty little woods back there, the little creeks, and very, it's cost for someone to walk, which are a good thing.
Right.
Further questions for Paul?
No, but, Paul, it's an enormous heavy lift. I think Dr. Bart was a real asset to the team. And I had hoped for a kind of a directory as to how this morphed or evolved from the previous set of comments on our work session to kind of help guide us and the public through its evolution. Didn't quite get what I was hoping for in that regard, pointing, for instance, pointing to me where things had changed addressing this comment or this idea. And so if you're able to provide that, I know you said the red line exercise sort of didn't work, but any kind of guidance you can help, I don't have a long list, or I had a long list of comments, and any other more answered with, yes, that sounds like a good idea, or, yes, we'll do that, or, so, you know, I would love it if there was a document that said, this is what changes, how it changes. One of the key features, I'm curious to know, because honestly, I did not dig into it, I was hoping for that guide to help me through it, because obviously, I lack a lot, but I'm curious, one of the big questions was, does private publicly accessible parkland contribute or count in the level of service calculations? I think at our work session, Dr. Bart was in the middle of a metamorphosis, a change in his thinking, how that impacted this document, and did it impact this document? So I'm curious to read all about that. I'll tell you, you know, I've always admired your graphic sensibilities, I mean, it's fantastic. I think this document is very beautiful because of those skills. One of the problems I'm still having, though, is I think the maps are incredibly important because they're designed to be informative, and they wouldn't be in there if they weren't. But they're really small, and my little eyeballs are really struggling with screening the information from many of the maps and wondering if we can format it in such a way that, you know, maybe it is on 11 by 17 and it's folded out.
You know, I think we could always have.
Well, I've looked at them, and they are a little fuzzy there, at least the ones that I have looked at.
Is there a risk in a master planning document, having that level of illumination being misinterpreted as planning?
This is where it's going to end. I think there is that danger. I think if you look at comparable plans from Raleigh or Rocky Mount or any other communities, it's understood that they're, you know, I mean, there's a limitation, and as a chronographer, there's just a limitation of how much information you can really show and how much the human brain can really take in. So, I mean, we could certainly do supplemental maps after this is, you know, gone through as it is, we could use a slightly better paper, which would, this is a lower-grade paper, if you used a higher-grade paper, you might get a slightly better resolution with things, but we can make separate maps available at a larger scale. But I think that the level of planning for this, it's less important, as you're alluding to, Mr. Barnes, you know, where specifically X, Y, Z is. This is primarily a document at that level for staff, and we'll have it in within a GIS. The main thing with most of the, the maps are to convey the general areas of where they're going to be required.
Well, that's what I'm struggling with, I'm not getting that information from the maps because they're difficult for me, for me, and I'm not necessarily talking about the maps and say, a park goes here, a park goes there. A lot of the maps are included in the data analysis, so it portrays a corridor or some collaboration of data nodes, and it's really just extremely difficult for me to understand or glean the importance of that thinking. If we took the time to make the maps, we really valued the information you're trying to convey. Me, they're not conveying it to me because I'm just unable to see them that small. So that's my constructive person. Now, if the rest of the board's having that issue or not, so I'll put it out there. Another thing with my little eyeballs is some of the contrast in the text, having a very dark background, dark letters, which are, makes, I don't know, makes it really difficult for me to read, and it's a struggle, and the last thing I want to do is create a struggle for folks to understand the data, it's important, yes, I mean, for me. I don't know if there are others that have that challenge, but perhaps on their computer screen, it'd read better.
Well, some of these things are iterative, you don't know what the final print is going to be like until it's done.
Sure. So those were just some of the graphics comments I made earlier, I'm still struggling with some of them, so. some of themself. If you're able to provide, I'd appreciate it, a, a guide to how the commentary.
Well, you know, I've reached out to you, I think Jeff and I went back through emails four to six times and soliciting whether we had addressed your questions adequately and didn't get responses. So, before the work session, we asked whether, you know, which ones had been addressed so that we wouldn't spend the work session focusing on, you know, ones that may not be important. So it's, if you were happy with the answers that you received, then, so, you certainly want to make sure that your concerns are addressed, but we've not quite sure what those are because we've addressed your questions and concerns and then followed up and didn't get a response. So I'm not sure what, what those would be, and, you know, the last two chapters were about 44 pages of material that we received, we put out about three weeks ago. So, I think I could, I could, one of the things with the red line document is the nature of the way this was produced. It was done some in Word, some in Adobe Acrobat, some in InDesign, so by the time, you know, we ran online retroactive red lines, but they're not, they're producing counterproductive information, and it's not, you know, it's not a legal document that you're going through. I think the, the big picture there is that if there's anything in here that, that as you've read through it, that you find that you didn't like, you know, aside from the maps, which is, then what is that? And to understand that you're going to have to approve anything that comes sub split to this plan.
Yeah, the board will have opportunity to incorporate these recommendations into policies, specific policy code ordinance.
Right. But I, you know, I think, to your point, Mr. Fielco, I don't think any document's perfect, but, you know, while this is, you know, a lot of it's, this taking this long has been because we haven't been able to get on the agenda because you've been dealing with so many other things. And in that interim, obviously, you've approved Chatham Park's additional element with, with Parks, that changes the goalpost. Chatham County's passed their recreation plan, which again, changes things. We're trying to incorporate some of that into, into this document, which I've explained in the memo and somewhat in the presentation. But if we, the longer we wait, there are more facts on the ground which are going to change, and, you know, at some point, you, you can't keep adjusting to, facts on the ground with a plan, you kind of have to say, here's two years' worth of work, we've captured current conditions and laid out a path for the future, and we have other projects that are needing attention right now, such as the Rectory Street Park, Kiwanis Park maintenance operations that are ongoing. So, yes, you know, no document's ever going to be perfect. I certainly share your concern about the gray background with some of this text. I don't think that adds anything. However, I think it's a far, I think it's an excellent document. I think it lays a broad framework that exceeds what most parks recreation plans do, and I think it's a solid plan that you can trust and refer back to and get guidance on. And I think we can always, the maps are always going to be refined and adjusted, and we could perhaps do a separate pair of map, set of maps that could be supplemental to this, that would be, we don't have a plotter right now, so we can certainly produce those one way or the other, but maybe even interactive ones that you could, you could go online and move around. But I think this is a solid plan that, that you can trust moving forward, you know, refer back to, and can always make amendments to it.
Well, there were numerous occasions when the reply in written form was to check with the consultant to do additional analysis.
That, that's true, and.
And I have not seen it, and I haven't heard about it. So that's the kind of thing.
Right.
That I'm hopeful would be explained as to how this document is necessarily incorporated or did something relevant to the information.
And I think that would be.
And likewise, we did have a conversation last week when I implored you to, if you are lacking my participation or information that you need from me, please, please follow up. To which you said, yes, of course we'll do, and I will have the report for this meeting. But the, the report that's in our package tonight says there are two types of revisions, but it, it says generally, this is the type of revision, and generally, I added this stuff that you've never seen before, such as the green rain plan, brand new, that could have used some explanation. So I'm looking for assistance. I agree that the vast majority of this is a real high quality document, there's a couple of things I want to make sure that we're considering, and we have talked about those, and I was hoping that you would explain how it was or was not incorporated and justification for such.
There's nothing they can think of tonight, right here, if that's the fight.
Again, I think, I think those, those things would have had even greater relevance had you decided to do additional work sessions to sit through those issues and deliberate and come to some consensus amongst yourselves to move forward. There was no movement after that work session, you have additional work sessions, and it didn't look as though consensus was going to be forthcoming on these larger issues. So what we did is, as clear in your memo, is said, put caveats where anywhere where there were recommendations, where there wasn't consensus to say, these are recommendations, but rest assured, you're going to be able to weigh in on any of these things in the future at your leisure, and if you want to delve into any of these specific projects, we're going to have to, you know. If you're wanting, really want to delve into the core service or delve into anything that's going to impact the UDO, there's going to have to be some real discussions there.
Right, and one of the key components of that discussion, which would affect both the level of service and how we address the UDO, was what does this plan say about private facilities, well, accessible facilities?
Sure.
Because in the past, you, the document has said, they do not account for the level of service, they just don't do it, they're never going to do it. And we thought, is that an accurate way or an appropriate way to do it? Because clearly, parks and recreation facilities that are private in nature, and I'm not talking about the high-end soccer schools that you're talking about, kind of like in general, development that provides private facilities open to the public that are managed by homeowners association have a lot of value. To, 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 to level of service, this document previously said, how would it inform how we go about writing elements of the UDO to say, do this, don't do this, include this, don't include this? So that's why I think it's important.
Oh, sure.
Kind of thing, because it is setting goals that we will then, in the future, quantify the achievement of those goals.
So Chatham Park is envisioning a mixture of public and private.
Right.
You approved their additional element, which deals with their obligations to parks and recreation. So how did you answer those questions before approving that? What in your mind was your guidance in saying, okay, well, we're going to approve this, they're, they're offering a mix of public and private amenities? How did you come to that decision and conclusion that, yes, this is a, this is a great way to, to move forward, and we'll be able to meet our town's recreational needs as we move forward? I think, you know, had we approved this plan before approving that, then those discussions would need to, to be sussed out before that. That's done, so I think we, I think you've already approved that private facilities are going to play into our overall recreation scheme. How that's done, you know, will require further analysis and further thought, but we, you know, we didn't have additional work sessions, there wasn't, didn't seem to be an appetite to have additional work sessions. We offered one-on-one sessions with the consultant to help guide this, and, so I think that you've, I think we've already acknowledged that private facilities are going to play a role in our recreation system by virtue of our largest development, stating that's how we're going to meet the needs of your community.
So Paul, with my, my understanding that, yes, we've done the Chatham Park element.
Right.
And it seems the same would apply when we start working on, you know, we're going to finalize the UDO portion of that direction, that you would adapt to whatever we come up with, we would work in, in partnership with this, but if there's other, if there's changes we made in that, then you would adapt this to match your new decorations.
Well, we'll have to, you know, we can't, I don't think we want a situation where we have, we want a, a level playing field for all of them. So I think it would be probably difficult to have standards for the new UDO that are inconsistent with, with what's available at Chatham Park, but you're, you know, I hate to, Jeff might have a, a better perspective on that as, as far as future UDO changes.
My main question about this is, if we were going ahead and approve this tonight, that some of the changes could, if there are changes in the future, it could happen during the process of the UDO, is what I have in mind.
Absolutely, you can, you can update this just as any other plan. Absolutely.
Well, Chatham Park is like may occur in the future with other projects, given our ordinance allows for the planned development districts or the mixed-use planned development districts, or essentially, folks write standards for their specific project that doesn't now roll over and apply to the rest of the town.
That's why these are your decisions. I mean, staff can do what we can to help you.
Right.
Get to these conclusions, but that's.
So, back to the whole private publicly accessible parks contributing to level of service, does this document say that, yes, they do? Because you were indicating that we've kind of already taken that step, but I'm looking at Chatham Park as something that doesn't necessarily have to be the same as the town, and the town doesn't necessarily have to be the same as Chatham Park.
I think what this document does is say, is emphasize those caveats, that you can, as a town board, choose what you want to do with that and decide that at the appropriate time. So when you start looking at the UDO and those changes that need to be made, that's a decision for you guys to work out how you want to do that, and staff can help you, you know, in any way that, that you ask of us, and we can bring in consultants in any way that you ask of us, but, but those are decisions that are going to be your decisions, and that's what we're underlying here. This plan is, is guidance and framework, but when you get down to, again, barring, you know, dropping everything else that you're doing and focusing on this and sussing out these issues, which is going to take some time, because I don't, from the last work session, everybody was enthusiastic and had great questions and was engaged, but I didn't feel like we were anywhere close to having consensus around some of the issues that you're, that you're bringing up. So I think, I think that's something that, again, we need to just deal with at appropriate stages down the road, particularly with the UDO. And that's, that's a huge question, and we can't answer that in this plan.
Do we answer it? Do we say that all level of service parks must be public?
Again, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to answer that question now.
It used to say that.
I think what, what this plan says is what traditional parks and recreation, level of service, how that is, how that is, is done in the rest of the country, right? So that is a model that has been used elsewhere. That doesn't mean that you can't choose an alternative model, but this just says, okay, here's how Boulder does it, here's how other communities do it, here's how the National Recreation and Parks Association, these are their thoughts on level of service. So it lays that out, but it ultimately gives you control over what, if you have a vision of what you, how you want to meet parks and recreation needs for Pittsboro, great, but I haven't heard a consensus from this board, and this plan says, here's some ideas to think about. And a framework is just a, a way to think about different issues. It says, here's how national thought is at this time on meeting recreation needs. And, you know, that can all be, those are court questions, but they don't need to be answered in this document right now.
So, but it's a pleasure with the board. Do you mind going forward towards acting tonight, or is there a feeling that we?
Sounds to me like if you go ahead and approve this and then continue to work on that, I, I feel like it's really hard on this, and this is an exceptional plan, it has some questions to answer, but it sounds really clear to me that we can address these questions as we go along. So I'd be in favor of, I want to have an approval.
Yes, me too.
Is that a motion?
Okay. I make a motion to the board.
Second.
Moved by Beth Wilson-Foley, seconded by John Bennett. Is there further discussion?
I'll mention that I have not had the, well, had the opportunity, chose not a stage of thinking, but yet, that guidance so that I could spend my time very efficiently looking for those issues that were, in my mind, continue to be outstanding, that would be addressed in this document. So I will be unable to vote in favor of it only because I don't feel like I truly understand what's in it. I did, before we had our work session, I had questions, comments, and responses that this analysis would have done. So it's, it's expected, understandably, of course, brought to the document, and I don't know that, so I'll be unable to.
I feel comfortable with the fact that you continue to work on that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable also with the endorsements that we've received tonight, that Mr. John Dust, Mr. Jim Nas, Mr. Lake Long, the unanimous support from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I've had citizens approach me about it, and it's, it's a vision, it's a framework, and the policies that we make can be informed by it. We choose to utilize this really substantial piece of work, or the board can choose to make other policy decisions as we write ordinance in the future. I'm, I'm very, very happy with it, and I'd like to move forward.
I have just one thing to say, and I, I guess really, I don't want us to pass or move forward or anything, just like we did, or the planning board sent the UDO to us. We're, the UDO is back in our hands. It, the, the question I heard that night was, well, we've been working on it for years, you know, that's, to me, that's not a sizable answer, but I'm getting off the subject, but I, I really think if a commissioner has a concern, it should be addressed, and then possibly we could move forward this next meeting.
I just think this is different than an ordinance, it's more of a, it's overarching, and it's a vision plan, it's not going to be, it's not the same as a, as an ordinance.
The UDO can be, or it can be changed at any time, too.
I, I really think basically, if there are these type of concerns in reference to this, then this is good. However, Commissioner Fielco has certain issues that he has raised and certain answers that he would like, and I think any commissioner, whether it's me or him or anyone else. And I think any commissioner, whether it's me, or him, or anyone else, should have some answers to those particular questions. So right now, I could not vote for it. Not in this, with that type of hesitation from commissioners, I could not vote for it. But if he can get his answers, then I think we will be fine. And then on top of that, I need to see more in here also, are we participating or partnering with the schools? I need to see, basically, in reference to those large projects, I think a lot of times we need to know that, too. And in this, and not only that, but we're talking about, I know you indicated there were funding sources, we're trying to find funding sources, this, that, and the other. But this is a very expensive plan, and I would hope that we could get funding sources. And even though he said this was just a plan or some type of guide, that's true. But a lot of times when there is what we call a guide, oftentimes it's misconstrued as this is exactly what you have to do. So, but I cannot, with his, with his concerns.
Well, you know, my UDO's plan took six years. Our UDO's taken four years, and this has gone on two years. We can certainly extend it if we need to. I think this is a legacy for, for you, and an opportunity to wrap this up. But do we need to go through, was there a consensus around which of those questions that you, just so I understand clearly what it is that you're asking for? You want to see, it's going to have to be text. We're going to have to get rid of everything else to do some kind of semblance of any kind of red line. But again, it's 44 pages that was issued three weeks ago, so we can, what's the will of the board moving forward?
Well, I think we still got to vote on that.
We have a pending motion. And that motion was backed out, Wilson Foley, seconded by John Donnitz, to proceed with approval of the.
Mayor, one question. If I may interrupt you. I support this document completely. Is the possibility of this motion being revised and accepted with the compliments of Commissioner Fiocco's comments received and approved?
I don't know how one could do such a thing, because, you know, it's all anything, and I'm not sure that we, we would.
You're saying?
I'm not sure, Commissioner Fiocco, because what I've heard tonight is that you certainly have a concern or a set of concerns that are a policy matter that this board has deliberated on and not come to a consensus on.
If we choose, I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe it as that. There were questions that were addressed that said, basically, we need to consult with the, our consultant to better understand where that data came from, whether or not to include it in the plan.
I think that this is a document that, it's going to go through numerous changes over the next 10 years, however long we use it. There's going to be additions throughout it. And I think this is so different than an ordinance. I think, kind of look at it as if it's one of those.
No, no, no.
If things can be changed, if you can add things, it's not like it's not.
Well, I know they can. But what I, what I think this document does is it lays the groundwork for what the aspirations and goals are, that when you write the ordinance, you refer back to this. And I know, John, you say, well, we can change it if we want to. We don't really have to pay attention to this. But I, if we didn't have to pay attention to this, I think it'd be a total waste of time and energy and money.
If you don't not pay attention.
Well, when you say we can decide to do something else, I think this, people are going to look to this eight months from now, nine months from now, trying to make decisions about what the ordinance should demand and what it should say, and going to, I, I, we're all going to rely on this. And what it said were the goals and aspirations of the community when it comes to parks and recreation. And one of the big issues that I don't think is resolved is whether or not private facilities, i.e.
Excuse me?
Sorry, I was just saying what you were saying, because you said it about eight times.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it if you would not do that.
So, I'm just trying to figure if there's a way to pass this, but leave something in the motion that that particular issue needs resolution.
Like an additional element? Say, we want to look at private versus public. If that's your main issue, have an additional element.
How, how do you think that one could make this work?
I think that you'd have a comparable precedent model of having an overall master plan that may have some issues that are not entirely resolved. Say you have some additional elements that you can work on with more leisure and insight and input from the board of commissioners and staff and any consults that we may need to bring on. So public-private is the main one. Maybe there are some other ones that you'd like to identify and say, hey, within the next X period of time, we're going to, we're going to resolve to get together as a board and come to some consensus with these issues. Now, you may want to, we may need to hire, rehire Barth to come in and guide you through some work sessions, if that's what you're envisioning, to really get to the core of some of these things. But we need to, I think if you're going to take that approach, identify what those things are. Public-private is a big one. If there are other things that you want to deal with, you know, after adoption of this, identify them and say, we're going to commit to coming to some consensus around these issues within a certain amount of time. And take that approach. That's, that's one way moving forward, which I think might address your concerns and be able to adopt this document at the same time, or adopt this document now.
Well, I don't know if you've noticed, I would not call the process of the additional elements any way related to letter.
Fair, fair.
Yeah. So this document is, I know that there's many who feel it is ready to go, and I simply have not had my questions addressed. They may be, and I have not taken the time to look into this, because I thought there was going to be a guide. If there's not a guide, that's fine. I will take the time to go through it myself. If this board votes this evening and does otherwise, I, I'll understand. I mean, there is, it's important for there to be a majority vote. I respect that completely. I'm just telling you where I'm coming from.
Perhaps the easiest way to break through this then would be to go ahead and vote on the motion. Would be, would the board wish to address any other alternatives, or shall we proceed to vote?
The board would like to consider attaching this with wording that allows for additional clarification on issues that Commissioner Fiocco has raised.
But if he's talking about one issue, it was several. But then, again, as you said, it may be in here. I don't know. But I definitely am concerned also about that private, public, private thing. I think at the work session, I thought it would be. I remember, so I left. There's several things that he needs to clarify and send here. But he needs to know that there are things that need to be, he needs answers to some things. So if you can amend that motion to say, all of you concerned, then.
I'm trying to figure out a way to make this work. Thank you.
Well, we need to, the level of service recommendation in this document is not included by. I think that's.
You mean the question on public-private?
And whether or not, as overall level of service.
That was a big question that I thought was an enormous amount of time and energy put in during the work session, and yet I don't know how it was resolved in this document. That was the kind of thing that I was looking for, to say, yes, there, I mean, the memo does acknowledge that there was substantive commentary in the work session, but I don't know how it was addressed.
I agree. I think that's an important issue, but I feel like we could have this with, with that piece in there, that this part will be resolved. And if there's something else, you would also include it.
Well, I would like to see level of service acknowledge private, publicly accessible.
I will add that in those areas where you saw private alternative providers, there weren't overlapping public facilities there. So there's acknowledgement that where Chatham Park indicated we're going to have a public-private mix, and that's where they're located, we're not going to duplicate in those areas where those are shown. That's from their material that they provided to you the same day we brought this document for adoption last time. They came up with an alternative scenario which influenced policy. So we adopted essentially what they put forward and said, okay, this is what our major development is going to do. We'll work with that.
Paul Messick, as to assist us in parliamentary procedure, is another alternative, a motion to table, and does that take precedence over the pending motions at hand?
Yes, ma'am.
That's another alternative. To make, to, a motion to table. We take precedence over the motion that stands currently. So we can either vote on the motion that stands, or somebody could make the motion to table until next meeting. Hearing your motion to table then, let us proceed to vote on the motion. By that, Wilson Foley, seconded by John Donnitz. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
There's opposed. No. Mr. Farrell, I'm sorry, I didn't know how you voted.
I didn't vote.
And therefore, it would be a vote in the affirmative, and the motion would carry to accept the master plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I would still like to address Mr. Fiocco, Commissioner Fiocco's concerns, even after adoption of this. If there's a way that we can make sure that you're comfortable and aware of the issues involved. You know, my door's always open. If you'd like to work with Jeff and I, one-on-one, or with our consultant, to work through these issues to your satisfaction, I would certainly put forth that invitation sincerely, and I want you to be comfortable with this as well, moving forward.
I hope that we can do this quickly. We can get this on the agenda in the near future so that.
Well, it doesn't need to be on the agenda.
I know it has, but I'm talking about the addition that he's talking about.
That would be a piece here, because we're getting forward to the, is it fast?
I know it's fast.
Okay. Under new business, we have an ordinance regaining special events in the town of Pittsburgh, and Brian Cruzbeck is going to aid us in this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Carey. I have a PowerPoint that is far less colorful than Mr. Forrest's downright spark. At the last meeting, you had approved an ordinance change that allows you to consume alcohol on town or public property if you created a special event, or if there was a special event. If there was a special event held, alcohol could be a part of that event. And so that, that resolution created that ability. What we have tonight is some language drafted by Mr. Messick to create special events and how they're regulated, and the process of applying for, conducting, and following up on any issues involved with special events. And I'll just, just want to walk you through some highlights in this, in this PowerPoint real quick. Definition of a special event is, is the, it's an activity that impacts the allocation of town personnel, using town streets, alleys, sidewalks, rights-of-way parks, parking lots, facilities, pauses, or other town property. The, the caveat on that is that, is that a special event, you're not allowed to conduct a special event, you know, that requires exclusive use or closure of property unless you've gone through this process and obtained a permit. And I'll explain that real quick. The exceptions to special events are any time it's, there's, there's a, there's a use of the public property that's otherwise permitted. Funeral possessions don't fall under this, nor does any local, state, or federal government acting in accordance. The application process is an important part of this, and that is that the first argument seeking to hold a special event will file an application with the town. If you approve this tonight, you, staff would then go ahead and create the application. Staff would also then propose a fee structure, if appropriate, for your review. You would have to approve that before we would actually enact a fee structure for that. If you require approvals from NCDOT, that applicant may be asked to use some of that per and follow up, or, and/or the town may assist with that. And then the, we can't issue, we, we will issue, we're not going to get involved with the shell, might, may, must, or any other elven verb associated with agreements on this tonight, but this is from, partially from, from the agreement, or from the ordinance language itself. But we shall issue a permit unless there is something that prevents us from doing that. And then finally, proof of insurance. Usually, we will require for an event of any kind of scale or magnitude. For instance, the ones that we're contemplating now and in the recent past, we have required proof of insurance. We want to continue doing that, making sure that the town is, is protected from that end. Now, this, a lot of this kind of comes about because the issue of, because of the issue of alcohol. So any, any event that does request that alcohol as a part of it would have to be reviewed by the town board. Typically, I could go through, I, the town manager, and however I designate that, I can go through and approve an event, provided however that it doesn't involve alcohol. If it involves alcohol, then the town board has that, has that ability to review. Now, the language on this, on this instrument is for this such so that, that use of alcohol associated with special events is only allowed if it's co-sponsored by the Main Street Pittsburgh program. It's got to clearly stipulate the conditions for serving alcohol in the application, where is it going to be located, how is it going to be served, who's going to be serving it, so on and so forth. I think we're also limiting it, the containers to paper or plastic, so obviously there's a public safety concern, I think, with using glass or bottles, things like that. there's a public safety concern, I think, with using glass or bottles, things of that nature, uh, so that's why we included that language. Uh, the area that the alcohol is served in should be defined, or must be defined, and the signage at the event has to show what those conditions for the area and the consuming alcohol are that are associated with the event. You also have to provide non-alcoholic beverages as options, so that keeps someone from just serving alcohol. I don't think that's going to be a problem. It has to be water, soft drinks, or some other form. The other thing that I, that I point out about the alcohol that I met, that I did bullet here is that I believe, and Mr. Messick can elaborate on this, but I think we're, we're essentially limiting, in this, in this language, we're limiting the alcohol types to, called malt beverages and wine, so in other words, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that beer and wine, it does not allow what I would consider to be a liquor drink.
Fortified. None of that.
That's the way it's written right now.
Right. The liquor is called spirits on the, on the technical. And you get fortified wine at ABC store, un fortified wine in the grocery store.
So that's, that is, that is the, those are the high points of the document that you have, that you have here. The other thing I would, I would mention that I might not have bulleted is that typically to this point, the town has reviewed all requests, the town board has reviewed all requests for street closures. So any event that requires, uh, you know, say, for instance, the example would be the Mason's event in town in September, October, every year. They come annually to the board, or Percy actually brings it to the board with requests to close the street, usually handle that consent. I would, I would probably prefer to have that anyway, I think it's just a clean way to go about it, that, so you guys have, you guys have the ability to keep tabs really more than anything on, on whether or not we're, we're closing any public street or using the street for some condition or use that it isn't permanently designed for. So, I mean, I, I would probably continue to follow through with that as well. So, those are the highlights of the agreement, or, excuse me, the agreement, those are the highlights of the ordinance. You know, again, if you approve this, if you approve this ordinance, then staff would, staff would develop the application, uh, and the process for the application in more detail, and then, once we've developed, uh, any fees, if appropriate, we would bring those to your attention, and I would think we could probably take that up. If necessarily, we'd take that up during the budgeting process, once we were all good and, uh, if no one wanted to handle that differently. Uh, and with that, you know, if Mr. Messick has any comments, questions, or specific comments, or, or anything that I left out, certainly, uh, he's, uh, able to bring that up, and also a few, any questions or comments or suggestions you guys might have.
Paul Messick, do you have any further to add?
I think, Brian, in summarizing the essential parts of it, if you all have any questions about the specifics, I'll try and answer them.
Lloyd?
I just have one question about, um, it said only considered if the event is sponsored or co-sponsored by Main Street. Do we also want to say that PBA, or do we just assume that they're always going to be in partnership for events?
I think right now, PBA, Main Street folks sponsor two of the events, regulating holidays and summer festivals.
I was just thinking about, um, like the food truck rodeo, there might be a lot of people who are going to participate in that, and that's not Main Street, right? That's PBA.
Uh, with, to be honest, but I know that Greg Lewis has done that in the past in his department.
Yeah, and maybe you, maybe you understand this, just to be, just, if I, you know, if I wasn't, if I wasn't clear on it, the events that use, the events that feature or use alcohol we're proposing, those be sponsored or co-sponsored by Main Street. If it's just a regular special event without alcohol, then it's, it's more or less open to any other organization, not limited to Main Street. Is that clear, Spud? So the Main Street piece only involves alcohol?
Yeah, if you wanted, if you wanted to have beer trucks at First Sunday, which is PBA's event, then you would not be able to have beer trucks.
I'm just wondering if you should include PBA, say, if it was sponsored by Main Street for PBA.
Yeah, that's something for you to consider, because as it's, as it's written right now, the language is Main Street, so unless, unless.
And the reason for that was that Main Street is your designated, um, downtown entity that you're trying to develop and maintain the downtown area. So if you want to allow other entities as well, then that's fine. Main Street, Main Street presumably has some expertise in terms of ABC permits and insurance and things like that. I'm not sure that other agencies or entities have the same or similar. And all I have to do is ask to be co-sponsored.
So the PBA might want to have that capability.
So the thing about the two organizations is Main Street is limited to an area, but it does support all kinds of businesses that have a relationship in the downtown area. PBA, you know, stands, I mean, we, there are members from Chapel Hill, uh, this organization, so.
Does it sort of flag it down for this one?
Well, it, it does, and the way it's written right now, it would be limited to an area of courthouse north of Hank Street, or maybe Salisbury.
In his first block.
Yeah, one of the things, that is one of the things I would like to change, because I would like to include the entire Main Street boundary, which Main Street is, is kind of organized events and do, you know, development in the entire boundary, not just downtown. So that would be one of the changes, that would be, but Main Street and PBA were candidate.
So it'd be hard if they were wanting, if PBA wanted to do something, they would just, um, recruit Main Street.
Many of the same chambers are in Main Street and PBA.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
I agree, don't want it to be exclusive, and it's the mission of Main Street to bring people to Pittsboro, and in the historic area, so. Well, it can. And that is, one of the reasons that we brought this up and changed our code ordinances last time, and now we're looking at its policy, was Pepperfest. Pepperfest has spirits tasting. If we outlaw spirits, Pepperfest will not happen. It would be, and so, anyway, there's change this to allow spirits, because it will be tested in ABC authority.
So would that event fit in this ordinance?
That's true.
I think we need to change, because I think that would be a true, for this work, we didn't have a, to Pittsboro.
Well, there's a difference between mine and spirit, so.
For so do. That's another concept.
So, we've got the high test and low test question.
It's not sale.
Understood. Tastings, but there may be a commission fee for the tastings, which isn't a, a per-unit sale of, of spirits, but, um, per, like, samples. Yeah, it's, it's an important event, and if we're trying to attract it downtown, I think we should do so effectively, and this is not going to help us attract it, and we need to think differently about that. I'm curious. Mr. Percy is not participating longer. Yeah, you, I mean, this evening, yes. But I would be curious to hear his thoughts, um, and, uh, Mr. Crispbeck, and Mr. Messick, specifically to the question of tastings of spirits. How do you feel that would, um, mesh with, uh, the spirit of public safety that we're, we're aiming for with this particular draft ordinance?
That's your call. It's consumption of, of spirits, just like consumption of malt beverages or un fortified wine. And like you said, high test, low test.
Will we allow it in restaurants? And it's, so far, it has not caused problems.
The public street is different than a restaurant.
I understand that, but when you close off the street, it's not different.
Sure, well, we're weighing a policy question as regards the draft ordinance regulating special events in the town of Pittsboro, specifically with regard to the question of the, um, alcohol content of drinks allowed under the policy. Specifically, the Pepperfest, this event would likely attract to downtown, but one of the important activities of that event is the tasting of refined spirits. And this language would not allow that. And I think this pol, this board needs to make a policy decision about how comfortable and uncomfortable we are regarding a policy that allows tasting of refined spirits, in addition to beer and wine, un fortified wine.
These are levels, lovely, these are spirits.
Yep, yep. Made in the beverage district over there on the Oak Park Drive. And I'm wondering if you might have some thoughts as chief of police, you know, guys.
How does it relate to public safety issues, determining that spirits can be used as well as beer and wine?
As y'all know, the, the definition basically of alcohol content, malt beverages are considered beers and wines, and then fortified wine, if I remember correctly, has at least 21% alcohol by volume. Spirituous liquor always has, usually, uh, 20 or more, and some would give around 8%. Uh, so really, just depending on the amount of person that consumes, also whether they have much alcohol related to you. And there's all those effects, you know, physiology, empty stomach, body elimination. Uh, as far as how I feel about it, uh, I've tried to remain, I hate to say it this way, but try to remain neutral, because I feel like that's more like a policy decision that y'all would want to make. I don't want, I feel like I'm saying one way or the other, uh, you know, other than obviously, I, I would like to see where there is, and those regulations are pretty much there due to the ABC permit laws, uh, where obviously they're not supposed to serve some of this, obviously, a pair, that people off, and those type of things. I mean, obviously, we don't want to get, you know, and that's, if they're, a, a permitted by the ABC board, by the state ABC board, they know the guidelines they're supposed to follow, whereas they're not supposed to over serve people, or serve people that show up that have already had too much to consume, and those types of things.
But does it mean that people who consume those spirited liquors feel like a Baptist preacher?
Well, I have to say, go ahead.
Would they endanger the public to a greater extent than would someone that consumes wine and beer?
I don't know if I would say, it's just, uh, it's not that I know either way, it's, but obviously, spirited liquor has a higher alcohol content, and therefore, if you start consuming that, you're obviously going to, uh, yeah, you know, per, per ounce, obviously going to reach a stage of impairment a lot quicker. Whereas you take a malt beverage, I, a beer, most beers average, I'd say, about two and a half to six percent alcohol content. So, you know, that's why beer actually has a low alcohol content, but somebody consumes 12 beers, it could be as drunk as someone that consumes, you know, two or three stiff drinks.
So are we taking, talking about the difference between tastings and consumption outright? Could you, could you say that tastings would be permitted, but outright chocolate would not?
I, I don't know what the ABC permits for tastings are, what it says. I don't know what the ABC permit says, but how many tastings you can taste.
I think also, it's my, a personal decision about, you know, just because someone is drinking a margarita instead of beer, it's obviously the responsibility of the person who's consuming alcohol not to ever do it.
Yeah, but then on the other hand, I mean, it's, some people are going to overdo it regardless.
Some people are going to over, overdo it with beer.
But then what comes into play is their ABC license, is that not correct? That in the big, that, uh, establishment that is serving that particular person, if they go over, that person, no, 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 I'm not drunk, I need some more. If they go over, they're going to lose their ABC license.
They're, they're at risk of losing or being penalized by the ABC board, but you also, uh, you get into all those gray areas, like, just be aware that once we allow this, it's hard for us to determine what people have snuck in. I mean, let's, let's face it, you know, this, the, you know, it happens, uh, it happens at bars and establishments, you know, it, it happens at establishments here in Pittsboro, I don't know what they mean, they do what they can prevent it, but, you know, people want to cut a corner, and they're, they're pocketing little airplane bottles and go to the bathroom, so, it, it, you know, once you establish, just be aware that once you establish an environment, we allow alcohol to be consumed in this area, it may be snuck in, or it may be somebody bringing in their own, and it's hard for us to determine what belongs and what doesn't. And so just be aware of that too, because, you know, I don't have a, you know, we don't have something where we can tell if that's, if, if they're serving one, you know, type A beer, or just like Bud Light, and somebody slips in, you know, what's the big food right now, Bud Light and, uh, Ford Light, the commercials look cute, so that's what I'm saying, you know, we won't know.
I have a question about, like, for the people that would be serving alcohol at these events, I assume they would have to have an alcohol license and serve it.
Yeah, they'll have to have the proper permits when they come.
They would have to have a license, but that, that still don't mean they're going to be able to.
It's kind of, they're not going to want to lose their license.
They're not going to want to, but that can still mean that.
So there could be somebody that showed up to the, you know, plastered, and they never even got an alcohol beverage from them.
Right, but I think it's the same thing, it's, I mean, the same issues we're talking about are the same, whether it's in restaurants or the streets that are closed off. I mean, I think that it's going to be up to the people that are serving alcohol to make determination if they have enough to drink, and it's usually, you know, pretty, I think it's going to be somewhere, and I, this, I think if we don't allow this, then we would be at risk of losing the Pepperfest point. And I, I don't know if you know much about that particular event, but it attracts thousands of people, it gets bigger and bigger every year. It would be such a great event, and I'd hate for the town to lose that, uh, when, because of the tasting, which is a lot different than, than doing shots, these are going to be tastings, and they're not going to be empty stomachs, because the Pepperfest is all about eating food.
Oh, that's true.
So I'm, I'm not concerned about it as much as if it was like a, a frat party at the town of Pittsboro or something.
I didn't say I was against it, I'm just concerned with it, and I know, I don't care, people will drink, they will say, no, 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 I just had this little bit, they will drink. They will drink, and take beer and.
Mr. Foley, I'm, I'm also very encouraged about the festival, I think it'd be a really nice boost to downtown. The, the thing that I would like to get greater clarity on is that it seems it might be useful for the organizers of the best to have a conversation with Mr. Messick as regards, um, the specific procedures and, and ABC license for event, because what I'm curious about specifically is whether or not it is an ongoing license, or a license for that event that is issued on a one-time basis by the ABC board, uh, in which case, I think the risk of losing the license in case of something important happening is less of a penalty. Oh, we just had a really bad year, we moved back to our chapter, and that's a horrible idea.
Commissioner, if I may, some of these permits, sometimes an establishment carries them, their permits extends it, some just get them outright, and that really, uh, I'm not expert in it, but they get, uh, like, what time permits, and that may actually have less teeth if they're, if they're just told they can never have again. The other thing I'd like y'all to remember is, you know, whatever criteria you set, we have to have a reason for telling someone else to know if they want to have an event serving that same type of alcohol beverage. So you need, I, I mean, if Mr. Messick verifies on that, obviously, I'm just a, an awkward monster, but, you know, we, we need to be fair and equal in the way we administer this. And, uh, so you need to be aware of that, so when someone else comes and asks to have a similar type of event, you know, what are our criteria, and what are our reasons for you to approve it or design it?
Can we get a refresher on calendar, Pepperfest calendar?
It's usually in the fall, I think, around September.
I'm trying to get them buried, six months or so buried.
My understanding is usually in September, month or four.
Just as soon as possible, if any was going to be here. Yeah, oh, God. So, um, I mean, I think when we modified our, um, code ordinances last time, it was in my mind. So, I mean, I think when we modified our code ordinances last time, it was in my mind, it was including spirits. And this document just has one statement, it sort of intends to challenge any other type of alcohol to be approved other than malt beverages, unfortified wine. So that definitely misses the mark of my intent of being inclusive and explicit.
The organizing team at West meeting said specifically malt beverages and unfortified wine.
And that is the reason, the reason we did that is that code of ordinances does not make any mention of spirits. And so we had to work with what we had and say, we will not prohibit this, we will allow this under special events. Had we had an ordinance that said include spirits, we would have included that as well.
Well, if and when we reconsider this, and if and when we decide to, or when we decide to broaden the language to include spirits, we would also need to make sure that it's explicitly stated, fortified wines, that's one of the products of. I think meat is considered wine.
Anything happened in the draft? No, I mean, as long as it's done, and very careful now, I don't have a problem with, I have a problem with spirits because really, basically, the background, when we have certain events, we have to get special licenses to serve alcohol.
We don't want anybody hurt, we don't want to like.
Yeah, I don't want anybody getting hurt, that's one of my main concerns. And a lot of people bring their children to a lot of events, and I do not want kids that are going to get hurt, but as far as I'm concerned, you could add spirits now, and I'm good.
Or just remove any prohibition.
Yeah, I think, I would say, for what it's worth, the sale of spirits kind of makes it a little uncomfortable, tasting is a little bit more.
I agree.
Just for that, and the only other thing I'd point out, Mr. Messick can throw something at me if I'm following this, but the only, the only thing that I would, I would mention is that anytime you're using, in terms of liability, anytime you're using the street for something other than what it was designed for, you, your threshold for liability increases. And so that's where, that's where people like Percy and I get kind of nervous because, you know.
You're getting stumbled.
I've been through this before, you know, somebody trips over a pothole while they're drinking.
Or they fall into, you know, a plate glass window, when you've got twenty different coffee owners along the street.
Where the brother-in-law fights with the sister-in-law, you know, after being over served. It's something that can be managed, but it's a challenge.
I understand that there's a greater risk of injury.
That's what we do. It's, you're right, I mean, all these events are great for the downtown, and we want to be that kind of downtown, so I just, I just try to throw those cautions out there, so.
I know Main Street has to carry pretty good amount of insurance on these events, so.
Do you have concerns about?
Yeah, so I was interested in including spirits, I would like to change Mills Road Street to the Main Street boundary.
And what is that?
Is.
We defined it at a meeting not long ago.
Two blocks north and two blocks south and east and west.
It's defined by mapping, yeah, at the current day, I don't think it is defined in words.
So you're inclined to be able to close all of those streets, particularly?
Yeah, I don't think, quite frankly, you would have a plan to close this. Ten different streets.
I think it's not like it's a special.
It could be in one side or the other, or in this section of the downtown area, or in that section of the downtown area, I don't think he's proposing.
They have to define, they have to define the area that they're serving the alcohol in, they don't think that that's necessarily going to be an entire downtown.
I don't think LG about the board.
There's some portions of the Main Street map area that are either adjacent to or include residential areas, don't you think that is a consideration?
Yeah, I don't think many people are going to have a special event, because.
So why, why expand it, why not just limit it to the first two blocks of Main Street?
Because Main Street is a much bigger area than that, and we've got commercial interests in a much larger area.
Okay, would you create.
I have to review about the board.
We're talking about it being sponsored or co-sponsored by Main Street, yeah, Main Street boundary is not included in its entirety. I mean, it seems to make sense that they include the entirety.
But it also would be sort of rational to focus that area, so that law enforcement can be able to manage it, you can detour around it, and all those kinds of factors that need to be taken into consideration. If you allow Salisbury Street to be closed, just because it's in the Main Street area, there's going to be different considerations.
Exactly, and I think the organizers of the event have to have their act together and present.
And they say that's right.
And it has to be approved, so I think there's plenty of opportunity for review and suggesting this isn't the brightest idea.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you want to approve something that is described as the entire Main Street boundary.
No, I think there are plenty of caveats in the very first section that says, you know, these are the basis on which. The other thing, so Jay, you're talking up First Sunday, so this document talks about having to get a permit for a special event. And there are folks in the PBA who question First Sunday, is that a special event? And if so, do they have to apply eight different times for the same special event? Or would you do it one time each year, say, we're going to have this event, because it's our tradition right now? I mean, I think it would do ourselves a lot of harm by having this in the ways of First Sunday.
Or could you just call First Sunday, so we're all as an event that takes place on these different dates, but it costs one, one minute?
That was part of the conversation, can you have one application per year for First Sunday?
If the dates are identified.
Yeah, and they would be for First Sunday.
There is some administrative cost to the town to do that.
They might have to get an ABC permit each time they want to have it off the premises.
If they are serving alcohol.
So I mean, if they're willing to do it with ABC Commission, why shouldn't they be willing to do it with the town of Pittsburgh?
I'm thinking on First Sunday as we know it.
Yeah.
Not First Sunday without alcohol.
But even First Sunday does have some implications for law enforcement.
Yeah.
And.
The town, the town staff too.
So, collection, all that sort of thing. So why should one permit cover all those things when they're across the town each time? Why not, if the fee that is contemplated here, by me anyway, maybe not you, would cover the cost of the service that the town is going to expand here, why not require a permit and a fee each time?
Well, my interest is not to make change for Sunday.
Well, your interest ought to be to make sure the town doesn't lose any money on it.
Well, right now, the town participates in First Sunday.
We don't get anything out of it.
We get people to downtown.
On a Sunday. We don't get any share of anything.
We don't get a part of the fee for the little square.
And we have to pick up their trash.
I think that's a great thing for the town to contribute to, to the downtown area.
We don't get any tax credit.
Is the hour at a point where this is, um, is town people trying to work through considering we still have Pepperfest? Or, or are we ready to make a decision?
I would be careful with both, who made the statements.
In the paper? I'm counting three items.
Allowing those to be single permanent approval for recurring events that are known, suggested for Sunday, I think is the only one. Allow spirits and change Mills Road Street to the Main Street boundary.
I think Mr. Bonas wanted fortified wine too.
Yes, here's the question.
We're getting too out, too far out with the boundaries of that Main Street.
I think that's a good point there, because we're just saying that this is something that Main Street is doing, so it also, it's not like you're going to use the whole area. And it still has to come before the town board, if we think they're trying to take it on too much, we can claim, no, we don't approve of that. So it's not like it means that we're going to do an event that covers the whole area, the town board can choose to say, no, we can't do that. It's really just sort of like, say, I'm trying to think of a business that might want to do something, maybe down at the old Chicken Hatchery. You know, maybe they want to do a music event there, the guitar play, it would just give them the option because they're part of Main Street. But it wouldn't necessarily mean that they're going to close off Main Street, so it's going to be in that area, that street.
I mean, there's a lot of planning goes into the events, and it's not something to pull off on secret plans. There's a lot of energy, a lot of hours put in, cheapness. There's a lot of time to put into planning the events. Organizing, the free closure of DOT, doing the traffic control, I mean, there's a lot.
There's a lot of worry and, uh, ability to it.
Could you give an example, like, Chad had a separate vanity, when I worked there, we did an annual light run, that was a big fundraiser for us. And at the end, we had food trucks, or beer trucks, that were going to offer beer to the cyclists when they finished the course. But the way everything was written, we couldn't, we couldn't do that until we found, we had to go to a private business that was kind of off the beat track a little bit, that was willing to do it, and do it there, but it, so there's, sometimes there's places that are off-site, which were not, like, just sort of right downtown, like Recycle Event or some of these other things like that, Walk, who knows?
But a cycle event would be a special event that's going to require town forces to be mobilized, take, you know, into consideration. All this requires is that there be a permit applied for, that the town know what the deal is, that there be insurance to cover the liability aspects of it. You know, and so, I mean, it's not unreasonable for the town to know what's going on.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that sometimes there might be something besides the street festival, that sometimes there's other kinds of events, that's why I'm saying the whole Main Street area, because there might be something else that we want to be able to accommodate.
I could imagine our new town hall having an event on that new patio, on that new plaza, or up on the parking deck. Or on both Hank's End, Salisbury, stretching across our parking deck and down up the patio.
You could put the beer truck in the parking.
This gives more flexibility, I thought, and it's, because it's still up to the town boards to determine how to do this.
I don't like that recurring thing. And to me, if it's going to be recurring, you can either pay every time.
First Sunday, pay every time.
Exactly, you have to have, well, now, if they're going to do a special event, they're going to do a special event.
I mean, just so much blood alcohol, it's not finished, you're still.
You're going to have to have additional police there, yeah, you are.
I'm going to change, or reclassify First Sunday, and make it more difficult for First Sunday to then to. Many, many people in Pittsburgh will come to enjoy on a regular basis, all of a sudden, you make that more difficult and unfeasible. Today, it doesn't have alcohol, if it needs to have alcohol, then guess what?
Then you pay.
Every time.
And there are those who are already against that, but I don't understand.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think, I think these changes seem reasonable, the only other thing, too, with these events and the recurring events and things of that nature is we're adding, I mean, we're talking about Pepperfest tonight, you know, it wasn't long ago that, it wasn't long ago that we didn't have, that we didn't have the Summer Fest. You know, it wasn't long ago, First Sunday, it wasn't really the event that it is now.
Wasn't long ago, we didn't have tree lighting.
And, yeah, the tree lighting, the Santa, have the Santa parade, we've always had that.
On trial.
But it's a Santa trial, I mean, there's, there's event, and event, and at some point in time, I mean, it's, it's what Percy and I kind of struggle with, is how do we, how do we manage to cover all these events in terms of personnel? And we have, you know, personnel have to comply, it's outside of work, scheduling for that, and it's a challenge. And so we're not saying don't have it, we're saying absolutely, we want to have it, but we want to have it in a way that we can support it properly, so I just, I would throw that out there.
I don't think I'm making any suggestions to the contrary, at all.
If you rent a community building on multiple days, you pay rent each time?
Yep.
No difference.
Yep. And I don't think the streets are feasible property.
No, but the police, if they have to reconfigure their schedules, pay overtime, that is a cost.
Acknowledged, acknowledged.
And why, why should the town pay for that, absorb that? Why shouldn't the event holder pay for that?
Well, I'm saying Main Street pays for all of it.
Well, we're talking about First Sunday now.
That's right, it's an, it's an ongoing event that has been in the town of Pittsburgh for many, many years. I'm not talking about trying to get alcohol permitted being served as special events.
Irrespective of alcohol, they need to file a permit that's set to date, and to.
Who doesn't?
Whoever, whoever wants to have an event on, a cycling event, rain gear run, anything that uses the streets, anything that uses the sidewalk, any, any event, as is defined in here, needs to apply for a permit, so the town knows when it is, what time it is, to make the resources available to cover it, somebody to collect the garbage, somebody to, you know, direct the traffic, all those things need to be paid for.
Right.
And why shouldn't the event holder pay for it?
Exactly, I'm not arguing against that, what I'm arguing against is changes First Sunday.
They use it eight times a year, why should they pay for it eight times? The cost of the same.
Because they don't pay for it now, and the town benefits from it, it does, it pays people in Pittsburgh.
They might pay them in Pittsburgh, but they, there's not a lot of money spent to set that up in vendors, because there's very few businesses open.
I think the shops do, I guess, when you go on, when you go on to First Sunday, there's.
Eighty some hours a week, how many hours are you up a week?
But I, I wasn't saying the shop, people go on the shops during First Sunday.
I'm sorry, you gotta have a great gift none then.
But you can choose, it's not open on Sunday.
That's right.
And these businesses open, or some businesses open, and there's business out on the street.
But them on the street are the same as the food truck, they're not breaking morning, they'll pay their taxes, they'll pay, pay nothing, whatever, comes into their register, cash that, they're straight home with it. It's not getting taxes.
I'm just saying, just paying sales taxes.
As Mr. Cruzbeck did, getting sales taxes.
There is no way we would know if there's. I don't know that we know specifically how much early delivers back to the town in sales taxes. I don't, I don't know that Mr. Cruzbeck knows that, Davey.
We could probably find out.
You can get a food truck.
Does that come from the park?
I'm afraid.
That kind of what I'm saying?
We could probably reverse any of that to the county's insurance.
They collect our taxes, we don't collect taxes, but we do share information with the county. Because the point is, is that, the point is, is that whether or not, how much of a contribution First Sunday makes, and I'm not saying it's not a great event, I'm not saying we shouldn't keep doing it, but I, I broached the subject with them last spring when we added at our expense more, more portage on, for example, and I, I inquired very softly if there was a way that we could share in some of the proceeds that they collect for their booth. And they said that they were just starting to break even on it, but they didn't operate any specific numbers or balance sheets or anything to that effect. It's bigger than it was in the past, if, it's just something we need to consider at some point, because we're asked to contribute more and more into it. Main Street, for example, what percentage of money does the town, I mean, Main Street's providing the service, Main Street's paying for it, but the town provides what? Ninety percent conservatively of Main Street's funding, the town, the town of Pittsburgh.
Correct.
Provides to Main Street.
Correct.
It's, I'm not saying don't do it, we're just saying there's got to be a point where the town starts gaining a little bit more traction and consideration for the amount of work it takes, but I mean, that's from the town's sake. of work it takes, but I mean, that's from the town's sake.
So, I guess we've got a fourth question, and that would be the question of revenue. Discussion allows spirits support by law, discussion of expanding law boundaries, discussion of one application for repeat events, discussion of revenues for special events.
Well, that, it, as I mentioned earlier, I think the, the fee, the fee discussions take place probably around what time when you approve the fees? So we can put a little bit of thought into that.
Yeah.
And I, listen, I'm not out to get first Sunday or anything like that, I'm really not, or the Pepper Fest or anything like that, I'm just, just saying we're going to have to address that at some point in time. That's probably what I would recommend having, having that used.
Well, there is a, a lot of people within a lot of time trying to bring special events to Pittsburgh for the benefit of Pittsburgh, and they don't get paid time.
Very fortunate to have people on the country.
It's not really, if the town was interested in having these types of events and had to hire this staff, that would be a substantial cost to the town, I assure you that. So if we value these events, we value the efforts of Main Street, then we should support them. If we don't, we can, we can pull it over.
I would add something to that, and that is downtown has a challenge ahead of them. If Chatter Park grows, there's going to be more competition for downtown, there's going to be people going out with ease or to park with ease and less traffic. It's really important to me to reestablish, be the best downtown, because that's going to be who downtown is, be the heart and soul of Pittsburgh. We need to start now getting people to come downtown and do the events, because they have the good job of competition again at Chatter Park, so we need to support that, be that everyone we can, just to make sure that Pittsburgh's a part.
So, I'd echo that.
Exactly.
I have a little bit of experience with some of these special events at the, I think it's called North Hills Shopping Center on the north side of Rob, Kane Realty hires event management people to run their farmer's market, do all publicity for that, do a whole lot of other special events, and that real estate company is making those investments, they're paying for that in order to bring in bodies, which drives the traffic in stores and shops and restaurants. And I think that if Mosaic, Ego, C D N, et cetera, make a go of it, when they get the same bill, they're probably, if they're, have their whiz down, they're going to do something similar, so.
They're already starting to do things like that, strip oils and, you know...
First Sunday as a consultant, that I organize, that's why I'm at one of those.
But I see your point, too, we have to make sure it's not a drain on the town. I think we need to do everything we can to support the events downtown. It's, it's really vital, like, other people get used to coming downtown, huh, for fun.
Set traditions, build traditions. Since the Main Street program in 2011, we've been working at it many, many hours, on a daily basis, and, you know, we've got some good things happening, and while not, while the others, we did have a considerable student, are looking to have made it four, now, Main Street.
Look at the people that are coming down, there's a lot of people, they didn't think, they didn't benefit from all this. There are a lot of people, if you, you start talking to people, which I do when I take the photograph, a lot of these people are from other places, and they say, I want to move to Pittsburgh, I'm going to move here. You know, and, and we don't know, they come back here and eat at the restaurant, they come back, so there's, there's benefits, and we don't necessarily see. Um, and you think about, like, before Main Street, and part of this, the economy has improved, but you remember what Pittsburgh was like before we had Main Street? There were a lot of empty buildings, that the, there was, they were raggedy looking on the outside, and look at it now, oh my goodness, what a difference. And we're so lucky to have all these volunteers that are really working hard, that's putting in hours, um, to, to strengthen our downtown and outreach and out beyond Pittsburgh, and it's really astounding what Main Street has accomplished in those few years, from...
I don't think anybody's standing there, yes, anybody's that bad.
I don't.
Nobody's saying that.
I'm not saying that.
But, yeah, nobody's saying that, but they, everybody's just looking at the, the cost. And Pittsburgh's always supported Main Street, as long as, when they started it, I reported it down, the town board's always supported Main Street. But I just think that they just want, that there was, you know, there's cost was thinking, and that the manager, Mr. Cruzbeck, is just trying to let us know and be aware that there are extenuating costs in reference to that. But, yeah, I would love to see more pict, more pictures of, of minorities, diversity, but, you know, I mean, basically, a lot of times, though, you don't see that in Facebook at all. So, basically, it needs to be more, so people can know this is not just one type of town, this is a community that encourages all people to come in, for all people to come in and have a good time. You're, you can go to this restaurant, you can go here, you can go this bar, Pittsburgh's good for everybody. So that is the actual thing that people need to know about Pittsburgh. That's why I put on the board, to actually let people know that this is a nice place to live, this is a nice place to come and visit, bring your family, have a good time, we got great food, we got great food, we got burlesque. So, that's, that's one thing. And, yeah, I'm all for all the festivals we can get, for the little children, I'm definitely for something for them, because they need a special, something special for the children in their area of special. So, but I think we need to have all the festivals we can have, just have a wonderful time. I like the dance in the street.
That brought a lot of, that brought a lot of, it was great.
Out dancing in the street.
I, I got a video of that.
So, do you want us to work on language and bring it back, or do you want to agree with...
I very much appreciate that. I, I'd like to see the bottom graph for this, I think we've got four bullets now, four items to, you know, discuss, and I would suggest that perhaps we should do this during a budget discussion, your, your budget meeting, Mr. Cruzbeck, but we think carefully about the these, these structure, whatever staff would recommend, but also I would suggest that we think about phasing, so that the Main Street organization and the organizers of, uh, first Sunday see this coming and know that it's coming. And can plan a break, because we don't want to, uh, upset the apple pie, we don't want to disrupt what is a pretty good thing going, uh, but it's clear that we need staff, we need more heads up, or, uh, for the permit process, the assurance of proper planning, basically. Is that right?
Also, just, uh, please be aware that, as y'all, uh, have discussed, we have numerous events, and, uh, one of our number one resources are our employees, and we are still a small police department, and the majority of them work a very haphazard schedule, and they rarely have weekends off, and almost every one of these events are on weekends. And as we keep adding these, it's getting harder and harder for us to provide, because I can't, you know, continue to order my employees to work several events. So, please be aware of this, as much, everyone you know, I, I'm the son of a Pittsburgh small business owner, so you know how much I love this town and small businesses, but be aware that our, one of our number one resources is our people, and it will get to the point that we have multiple five K runs, we have first Sundays, as Mr. Cruzbeck's pointed out, we've had all these events that we keep adding with Main Street, we'll have a street party sometime, we'll have community events, and we don't have so many people, you know. Uh, so, just please be aware of that, it, it is going to get to where we will have a diminished capacity to provide for these events, uh, if, if we keep adding too many. I mean, it's just, you can't expect people to work seven days a week, you know, all the time, or, you know, even two weeks out for, uh, especially the, the way this job gets, uh, so I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative.
Small towns, small...
I just, you know, I mean, we, we have multiple events, and, uh, I'll touch on it, I'd rather not get into a discussion about it, but you also, now, now we're having multiple possible incidences we're having to prepare for, and I'm having to bring in employees for now, uh, for the other, other things that could become controversial. So that's again, where we're having to allocate resources, uh, so, you know, we don't know what that potentially holds in the near future, long term or short term. So, it's, it's, not that I'm against the events, uh, I've, I've enjoyed them, and, uh, the people that we coordinate with, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time are great to work with, once in a while you'll, you'll have, you know, I don't even want to say disagreement, you just have to figure out the best way to make something work, but, uh, but just please be aware of that.
All right, so we'll look forward to having that language back at next meeting, and, um, commissioners' concerns. Jake, Tom?
I just have one, uh, my little Jim out there, Old Gulf Road, Mr. Cruzbeck, has had a little problem with some muddy water, it's the Old Gulf Road, and, uh, Mr. Messick, you know about this, it, it's the road, also that turns off, uh, Old Gulf Road to the Austin Chapel Church Road, and that road shoots to nine oh two, I have forgotten the name of it.
Murdochs, that's a special issue.
Yes.
Perfect.
But off back in there, I know that's on two each lines back in that, that's been there for years and years, uh, I don't know, maybe something we may need to, uh, look on down the road.
I think there's a six on both ends, it's just a two in the middle.
Yes, somewhere around the Austin Chapel Church Road, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Jeff?
I had a question for Jeff, but he's gone, so I don't know if he can answer this question about Mr. Cruzbeck, but, um, there's people in my community of Powell Place are interested to know more about what is going to be, what is proposed for Rock Springs, Old Rock Springs Cemetery Road. There was, uh, that was listed on the, uh, things that are on, on the docket for the planning staff, and there's going to be two businesses there, just off the corner, you know, and, in fact, people are curious about what those are going to be.
I can double check, I, I suspect one of them is in a lot of parts.
I hope you can, if there's one across the street.
Don't do that, I mean, drug stores and big box stores move that all the time.
I mean, there's...
It's not my choice, it's just, the other one I don't, I'm not aware of.
Oh, my gosh, people would be so, so, you think it is, uh, I'll report?
No, that's, that's, no. That was my, I know that that was where they were interested, but I don't know if that's what was...
Maybe I should, I break Jeff Jones about it?
I'll follow up with you.
Okay.
That's all.
Good.
Tom?
Um, Mr. Cruzbeck, you mentioned a memo or, you know, a response some time ago about speed tables, and I wonder if you could circulate that, if they will find it.
Yes.
I didn't have it before.
I noticed in the phone too, but I had another call also from East Corwell Wallace pavement.
Yep, we got more information on that.
Cool.
So, the state, if the state is willing to seek control over it, we have to pass a resolution. John's finding an estimate for creating it. Uh, the only other question I have hanging out there is, is to confirm whether or not we can use Powell Bill on that, that situation, which I think we can, but, anyway, so once I, once I have an estimate...
Appreciate that, I'll pass it over.
I got a phone call that tweeted, said, please don't do anything about, uh, about parking on Hillsborough Street, where did that come up again? Apparently...
I hear it every, every week.
Do you?
Oh, yeah. Parallel to Powell, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Evacuation round Powell Place?
Yeah, actually I have, do you want to go into it?
Uh, nothing details, but I appreciate an update at the next meeting.
Right here. So, this is, this is Millbrook, this is Millbrook right here.
Yeah.
There's, uh, there's an unimproved road that goes right here, and, uh, I think it's gravel, Jeff had pictures of it, but he didn't, he didn't forward it to me. Jeff had spoken with, uh, the property owner here, apparently, and said that they would be willing to allow the connection, but it's not clear to me as to what type of improvement we would have to do on, on this, the, uh, so in other words, it kind of follows by highly scientific and surveyed line right here, uh, that's essentially where the, the road is, or the path goes right now, so it's a question of whether or not, whether or not, what type of improvements would have to be made to that, to accommodate whatever it is you want to do to allow, um, ingress, egress to this northwest part of Powell Place. Uh, so, the, the bullet sign, the board, your board action did require developer participation in the alternative route, so presumably the, the town pays for any, you know, improvements there. Uh, the existing route's unimproved, so, you know, base gravel or asphalt a minimum, and so from you guys, I think we need, you know, given the first bullet, is the road an emergency exit, is it just for emergency services, or are we intending it to be an alternate travel route for all traffic in and out of Powell Place? That's going to, that's going to really help us, you know, figure out what it is, bullet number two, that, that we'd be doing. Obviously, all of those costs are, are ours, so...
I can't imagine anybody wanting to die there without using that alternative, isn't it? Just for a minute, please. Yeah, maybe just for a minute.
So, yeah, I think that's, that's how, I'm sorry, the question that I recall is for even be a platform barrier, so that if there was a massive fire preventing vehicular exit from the other route, people could push through in this time.
I think there'd be less interest for people from Powell Place to go in that way, but it might be something for people to live in that, in the park, you know, that's true there.
Well, honestly, I haven't driven, I don't know, I don't know what it looks like, I'm not, I'm not at the fire department or EMS, whatever.
That was the line that you had there.
Yeah.
Where did, that would come out on eighty-seven?
Old Graham Road, Commissioner.
Old Graham Road?
Yes, ma'am, Fox Mobile Home Parks on Old Graham Road, just, uh, before we get to the by path.
I thought that that gentleman said you, that you could not use that, as just to be...
Jeff just spoke to somebody this second.
Yes.
You could use that, but then you were connected on to Old Graham Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the same way that Fox, that Pittsburgh Fox trouble part get out.
Yeah, that, that's Old Graham, makes Camp World leave right around, which is important.
In our understanding, well, my understanding was that guy said no. I'm not talking about the one who owned Fox, Fox, I know him.
Across the road is...
Is it?
Yeah. The entryway to Fox Mobile Home Park actually is on the property of the man on the west side of the road, and he gave an exclusive easement to Fox that allowed their residents to use that road to go in and out of the mobile home.
Which is why we're only building an evacuation round.
That's not what she's saying. You can't, if you can't get out from here, this would not be, if this man tells you you can't go through here.
You're saying why would he let us do that last little way?
Now, this is another guy that owns that, but right here, the one that you had that drove here, that was, uh, from Fox Mobile, yeah, that's from Fox, from, um, the lease who now, who now are the ones who are the owners. So, that's what I'm saying, where would you go after you got here, if it was an evacuation? And this guy said, nobody can use that other than the, the people that are living in both homes.
Okay, look, it's, uh, that was the conversation Jeff had, and he related to me, so...
Perfect. All right. Um, I believe that, uh, we need a motion to go into public hearing, to take a break.
We have a break first.
Right? And is there a motion to take a break?
The move.
John, Sue, Michael, Detective. So, is it okay?
I'll, Willie's got it.
And congratulations to these people who have absolutely no social life, what they...
Not eighty.
Thank you, I'm in the fourth. Oh, yeah, you got five.
See you later.
We didn't dine in the night. But we didn't want to... I ever made a motion to go into public hearing, to make, to amend the record at this point, until they make a motion to change, would allow us to have gone into public hearing.
Hello?
John's on it, that's been advised, that will be... Pause, dozen pages, just think that's a lot. Uh, uh, I can't say, why am I speaking to you? Okay.
It's not the way it is.
It's, it's... All right, so now is there...